Can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
We sure can, Council Broadhead.
Thank you.
All right, I see that we are turning the clock over to one o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order for Tuesday, May 7th. Attendance at the start of the meeting is Council Bromansky Hughes, Mackay and Killik and myself in chambers. Council Broadhead is, where are you Wes? I know you're cuter.
I'm in Halifax, Madam Mayor.
How's the weather?
Well, it was nice for about an hour.
Okay, well, we are getting the much needed rain that we need, so that's good. And Council Jolly is not with us, is that correct? I don't see her online. Okay, all right. Next on our agenda after attendance is the adoption of the agenda. We all got an email that we are adding an item. We're not hiding it under emergent, we're under in camera, fifteen point one. Okay, and it will be called Bellrose High School roadway improvements, I believe. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Are you on it? I see you've got a request to motion.
Mike and I were arguing over who was gonna do it, so that the May 7th, twenty twenty four agenda be adopted as a, or be adopted as amended, sorry.
Excellent, I'll call for the vote on that. Wedding's closed. And that Is it closed? There goes, the motion passes unanimously. The TV that we can see here for presentations and stuff is not on. I don't know if anyone can turn that one on. Thanks. Okay, next on our agenda is presentations, and we do have quite a few registered speakers today. That's always exciting to have people in the gallery, so we're not sitting here alone. Although poor Council Bromansky feels like she's all alone over there. She does have to yell. So I'm gonna, there was a request to reorder some of this, so I'm gonna read the order that I have and just kind of do a roll call to make sure everybody who's registered to speak is here. So I've got Dave McIlvery from the Rainmaker. Thank you, Dave. Is Emma with us? In Zoom? So Emma is the Chair of the Community Service Advisory Committee. She was here to speak to the grant recommendations if need be, but they're still on consent, so Emma, I don't know if you're with us or not. I see no intention to pull the, that item from consent, so we might not be needing to ask you questions, but if you want to stick around and watch, obviously you can. And then I have Stuart Nelson is with us. I saw Stuart, thank you. Mika is here, thank you, Mika. Miles Gibson, all right, thank you. It's like school, isn't it? Glenn Wilson, thank you. Scott Flowers. Lynn Rusnak, may Lynn. And then I've got three that were registered to speak for public hearings. So I will go in that order because that's, I don't mind changing the order that people registered. I'm pretty flexible. So we're gonna start with Dave. I'll just go over some of the procedures around public speaking. Everyone has five minutes to speak. Our staff have a little bell. They bought it staples or something that they ding at around the four and a half minute mark, just so you guys have an idea that you have about thirty seconds to wrap up. I try to keep to that five minutes just for fairness, and so no one gets extra time. And no, there's never a hint of preferential treatment, so I just keep it right at five. And then we're gonna just try to keep it to new information as we go through the speakers list. But Dave, you're the first one to speak, so there will be no new information. No one else is speaking to you previously, so your five minutes to start whenever you're ready. We'll get it. There we go, okay.
So a bit of background and objectives that we were trying to deal with. Since COVID, essentially, we were shut down for two years. There's been a lower uptake on participation and things like that. So we've been trying to look at expanding uptake and in particular inclusivity through some multicultural participation, promote the parade and festival as more of a premier St. Albert tourist event. We wanted to increase spectator attendance because it does more then for the business community in terms of downtown in that particular day. Make the parade bigger. We've had about fifty to sixty-five entries in the past two years. We're kind of targeting for ninety to a hundred this year. We're already up to about seventy. So I think that's a good indication. We wanted to increase participation on a, on a regional basis and like modernize it. We've been sort of working in the dark ages, so we've, you know, got a little more IT savvy and support in the background. Some of the changes we made to try and meet these objectives were actively solicit new entrance from a variety of community groups and businesses, both within St. Albert and the surrounding community. Targeted an increase of a minimum of thirty additional entrants, and we're well on our way to getting there. We contacted additional cultural and community groups to participate in the parade. In, in particular, we have the African, African Descendants group. We have the, a new group, the Portuguese Singers and Marching Group. And we also contacted several local Indigenous First Nations to see if they could participate because we've never had any participation from that community before. We did direct solicitation of historical marching bands that we've had in the past. It sort of dropped out. Last year, we had four bands, and through that solicitation, I couldn't believe how many people came back and said, yeah, we want to be in. And we've now confirmed nine marching bands and performance groups. And we did, we made an implement, implemented a couple of changes to the judging and prize money. We, we added a, a second and third prize to each category, so we have four categories, to try and entice people to come into the parade and do a little more with their, their parade entry. So what's the current situation? Well, we did the budget estimate two years ago in a two-year grant cycle from the city. We, of course, hadn't anticipated the rising cost of everything in the past year and a half. And we also didn't anticipate the kind of uptick we had in the, in the number of bands and performance groups. And we did get confirmation from the Inok Cree First Nation, which is the first time for Indigenous participation in the parade. And we're looking at this as like a bit of reconciliation, as well as some participation and inclusivity in terms of the, what's happening in St. Albert. I know St. Albert in a big way is, is looking down that road. They're bringing wagon and elders and riders. They're bringing drummers, they're bringing dancers and additional horse riders to the parade. So they're bringing quite a large contingent that we hadn't anticipated. They've made a confirmation that they're in, so we're looking forward to that. This year's parade I'm quite excited about because I think it's going to be an awesome presentation. So I mean, in conclusion, basically, the act of solicitation in bands resulted in an increase of honoraria that we paid to the, the bands of a hundred and twenty-five percent, which we hadn't anticipated. Confirmation of the participation by the Inok Cree First Nation in a big way, they indicated the honorarium would be three thousand dollars, which we don't have in the, currently have in the budget. And other inflationary increases, just advertising, cost of material, things like that, signage, and so on. So our, our ask is, we're asking for a one-time increase grant current this year for three thousand dollars in order to pay the honorarium for the Inok Cree First Nation participation. Without the additional funding, we won't be able to accommodate their, their honorarium. I'm not sure what will happen. I suspect they won't come. And actually, that was all. So that's what we're asking for, is if the council would consider giving us an additional three thousand dollars this year. We're going into a, another two-year grant cycle coming up this fall, so we will be, of course, putting in all of the new requirements. We've come up with assuming that they continue with Indigenous participation, as well as the sort of the, the numbers that we have. Are there any questions?
Yeah, so yeah, process wise, for those who've never been here, we then allow council to ask a few questions of our speakers. I have actually no questions, but I just want to say thank you for stepping up to be Chair. This is a big undertaking. And I just couldn't do it without volunteers like yourself, so appreciate that. And we got a quick memo about, you know, some of the marching bands and now the Indigenous dancers. Sounds like it's gonna be a top-notch parade, so awesome. But Council Bromansky has questions, go ahead.
The question I had, will you just apply for like ten thousand next year, or do you know yet?
My expectation is we'll probably apply for about thirteen thousand.
About thirteen thousand, so the, the three, you're just trying to budget it real tight this year, just to get through the year.
Absolutely, we, again, if they had, if they had chosen not to come, then we wouldn't probably, we wouldn't need the money, but they're coming, so we need the money.
Right. It's a good thing you don't have to pay all your volunteers because you have a lot of volunteers.
We do have a lot of volunteers, and I have to say, we could not do this without the city's participation. The, 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 the staff that I've been dealing with are awesome, and they're helping a lot. We the city already, just in kind, the barriers and all of the transportation, fire, all of them, policing, without them, we couldn't do the parade either.
Yeah, it's definitely a loved community event, for sure. And the rest of the questions, I was, oh, the only thing I did have is would bands cancel out if it rained, or do they, they march in rain or shine kind?
We go rain or shine. It is the Rainmaker, after all. Looks like it's already working, actually.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
All right, Council Killik.
Dave, thanks for coming and speaking today and, and again, thanks to all the volunteers that, that put this on for the resident. Do you have a sense of how many volunteer hours are going to preparing this event?
Yeah, we've, in fact, that goes into the grant application. It's one of the things we're required to put in there, and it's, it's in the range of between six hundred and a thousand hours. And like I've been, we're personally, I've been working on this now since basically October. Getting things in place. We had to make a lot of changes to enable us to be more efficient with handling entries. So we've done a lot of electronic entry forms now as opposed to paper and creating databases in order to be able to communicate with the participants quickly and easily.
Yeah, so about twenty thousand dollars if, if we were looking at, you know, easily.
The one thing I'm not sure about is what is the economic run on as a result of the parade event specifically, because it happens in the downtown core. And I'm sure there's lots of, of carry-on. I, I don't know how we could estimate that. Maybe the chamber could help or somebody, but there's certainly a, a positive impact on the businesses in the downtown areas.
Yeah, and, and you get quite a lot of other sponsorship value in kind from different businesses and direct sponsorship.
We do, we do, we get not as, not as big as, the city's sort of our gold level sponsor. Then we have, this should, just, just this year, we got a sponsorship from Standard General Construction. And they're basically covering the cost of all of the, the prize money for the floats. And then we have the city grant of about seven thousand, which covers a lot of the honorariums, plus some of the other administrative expenses that we have. Things like advertising in the Gazette, advertising on social media, plus there's, we have a VIP luncheon attended by the, most of the, like the judges and, and things like that.
And discounting Calgary and Edmonton, you know, pretty hard to beat this Calgary stampede, but Rainmaker would be right up there, I think, in terms of size and
My understanding is this is the third largest parade in Alberta.
Third largest, wow. That's awesome.
Sorry, I just let me finish. I, I should mention, we also have Kinda McKenney Funeral Home, Tim Horton's, JG Construction, which does all the street sweeping for the city. And Try It On Communications, which provides all of the radios free of charge for us to use during the parade event, so we can manage the parade route. So those are the other sponsors, in-kind sponsors that we have.
Yeah, so you've done a lot of fundraising, in-kind sponsorship, covering the prize money, and now we're still short this small amount.
That's correct.
Okay, good, thanks for the clarification. Again, thanks for thanks for the rain, a little on the parade.
I, I can't take all the credit, but.
All right, I have, no, no more questions for you now, and I, I don't want you to walk away feeling like you were not heard. So the way it works now is we're gonna listen to the rest of the speakers. That's on the agenda. And then the next part of the agenda is business arising from the presentations. So that will give us everyone here a chance to ask my staff a little bit of questions. And, you know, quite often when we get these kind of requests, the motion is not made today. It's generally made like in the days to come because we need to maybe get some background, et cetera, from our staff. But somebody will be in touch with you no matter what, one way or the other.
Okay, as long as I know before the twenty-fifth.
Okay, yeah, exactly. Yes, you're right, you're what, three weeks away now from the parade?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, I have a different order here. I have Stuart Nelson next up to speak. Is that correct?
Figured it out. Every time I come, it's new. So I'm Stuart Nelson. I've been a resident in St. Albert for over twenty-five years, parent of five children who are active in swimming, swimming classes and competitive for over fifteen. I've been involved in aquatics for over fifty years as a participant, a coach and official at all levels up to and including nationals. I'm also a professional engineer and worked on the design and construction of a variety of recreational facilities, including aquatic facilities such as the Lindsay Park in Calgary, et cetera. I'm speaking on additional aquatic space for St. Albert. There's been a number of studies that the city has commissioned over the years. It's been a well-known fact that aquatic facilities in St. Albert are bursting at the seams. There are wait lists for swim lessons, various aquatic sports, lane swimmers, lap swimmers, and other drop-in users are constantly looking for more time. The successive demand is known by council administration for many years, as demonstrated by these studies and reports. Twenty seventeen, there was an election question that the electorate overwhelmingly voted for a new pool, or additional pool space. And based on the parents that I've talked to and others, parents are now leaving to go, they go into Edmonton, they pay for private lessons in a private pool at a significant cost. Swimming communities promise to pool, and St. Albert is significantly underpooled, and the problem is only compounded. Based on a report, we had standalone facilities. It was looking at a separate report in twenty twenty, where we're building a new pool open outside of the current, where St. Albert is in the outskirts. It's estimated to be eighty to a hundred and ten million and take up to twenty years to construct. I've talked to the architect who put this together, as well as other guys like myself in the industry, and that's an accurate representation. This means that my grandson, who was born in St. Albert in twenty twenty-two, will have grown up, graduated from high school and perhaps post-secondary, and likely moved out of St. Albert before this pool is ever built. This does not come close to meeting the needs of the people of St. Albert. And quick correction on the information request that was put forward in December, where it was responded that a fifty-meter pool is an elite amenity. It's not an elite amenity. In fact, the minimum for the Olympics is two fifty-meter, ten-lane pools. And a single ten-lane fifty-meter pool would be not considered favorable for even the provincial championships. What we need is usable pool space, not an elite facility. The original concept of Service Place included a competition pool. Other communities in the area of St. Albert all have their multipurpose rec centers have swimming pool, multi-use pools. We don't. Here's an example of other communities. They're a similar size to St. Albert, and they've all got multi-use, multipurpose pools. You can see they're divided up into different zones. You can move the bulkheads in it. And you also have the ability, and some of them, to move the floor of the pool up so that they're showerier. This is just a concept that I threw together. We can put a new, multi-use, multipurpose pool as an addition onto the existing Service Place building where it was originally designed to put a pool. It cuts the cost down because you're not building your other infrastructure. It's all there. You've just got to add pool, pool mechanical, and the building envelope. Based on my experience as a contractor, designer, working on pools, and I've talked to two general contractors who were just building fifty-meter, multi-use, multipurpose pools with movable bottoms. They're estimating it would cost thirty-five to forty million. And the design, if you, from start of design to completion, would take three to four years. You can spend a year or so doing design and that. It's time for the city council to take the steps, put the necessary aquatic facilities into St. Albert. In summary, there's an urgent need to develop new swimming pool in St. Albert. Now, a new generation, an entire generation of children will be born and grown up before this pool outside in the northwest corner is ever built. It's imperative that we build a pool every time, every year we wait. The comp, the, the problem compounds as St. Albert grows, and we still don't have any pools. I urge council to direct administration to start the design and then construction of a multi-use, multipurpose fifty-meter pool with the movable bottoms as an addition to Service Place immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions of Mr. Nelson on his presentation about the fifty-meter pool?
Or do you want to have questions at the end of all of them?
No, we'll do them at one at a time, yeah. But I see no questions at this moment, so let me see. I think they wanted Scott Flowers to go last, so I'm going to my, oh, you got a question? Okay.
Hi, Mr. Nelson. I'm just going back to when you, you some previous, it's, it's the good-looking guy down here. We kind of, we kind of have the same barber, so we should be able to communicate. When we talked last, you and I, that was back in June, you had indicated in the range of thirty million, and of course, that's conceivable that, of course, it's gonna go up in a year time in relation to everything else that's going up. You know, and I asked, so your preference is Service Place area because you believe that the existing, I mean, even though there was potential always going as far back as, I think, twenty-ten to expand it out to the one side. I'm, I'm gonna probably ask a few questions of administration in relation to whether or not that includes some of the existing infrastructure that can be kind of double service, because I mean, I'm not sure whether or not you'd have to totally build a whole new facility because of the size. But I think when we were talking, my question to you was you wanted service because you think that we can do it in three to five years and not Shiro, because that's where our growth is to the northwest?
We have, yeah, growth northwest and northeast on both sides, so they're both growing. I mean, the distance, it's timeframe to get that out there. And I, I talked to the architect who ACI Architecture when we were standing there, and I was, and, you know, on the cost of that pool and the facility he was designing, and then what the timeframe to get that going, because at Service, all, everything is there. I mean, to be honest, we'll spend more time probably getting it going. You know, getting approvals through council, getting the design done, the actual construction. I talked to, and again, I worked with Bird, they did seek place. And so I went down there and talked with them when they were in construction in twenty nineteen, and just said, okay, if you carved out this piece, what would it take? And there's another facility that's being built in B.C. that is, I mean, it's massive. I said, not that whole thing. Because they've got two pools, they've got a fifty-meter pool, they've got a twenty-five-meter pool, they've got leisure pools. Just this piece, how much would it cost, and how long would it take? And it's estimated, you'd be eighteen to twenty-four months to construct it. The first year to two years is, you've got to get a design, you can tender and put it up. The reason Service Place is, all the facilities are there. I mean, you've got the infrastructure, you've got, you don't have to add somebody that's gonna, you know, take the tickets as they go in. It exists, so that cuts your costs down significantly. And the other servicing is there, is your, you know, sewer water, everything. I know that it's going in, in the north, but it's not all there. I mean, one of the things that I think you've mentioned it in the committee of the whole, there's, okay, how do people get across, you know, Ray Given, which is feature highway two? You can't. So now we got to build a bridge, pedestrian bridge or something, going over Ray Given to actually get to this facility, and you go, that's a cost that isn't included in, in that analysis. I mean, the one thing that wasn't analyzed when administration came forward in January twenty twenty was, we had the Rohit proposal, LandRex, and then they said, well, what else? We got to have three Badger Lamps. I mean, can be honest with you, you got three probably not the best places to put a pool. There was no ever consideration, well, what's going on here, which is what the election question was. If you go and read all the newspaper articles leading up to October twenty seventeen, they're all talking about addition to service. Overwhelming majority, in fact, more people voted to expand the pool at Service than voted for any politician, including the mayor. So, I mean, people are saying, this is what we want. And I talk to people now, and they think, aren't, isn't CD count, they're doing something. And I said, yeah, but here's what it is. They go, oh. They don't understand, this is gonna take a long time to get that thing built up, sure a lot. People want something now. I mean, they're, they're heading into Edmonton for all their swimming because they can't get anything out here. So that's a, that's a concern, and that, that's why this, that place would be quicker to get it up and running, and then less expensive overall. And like I say, the pool I showed was, it's multipurpose. I mean, they're all over the place. I've seen them in Windsor, and you see them in Fort Murray and all that stuff there. You divide the pool up, you could have a swim club running in one area, you can have lap swimming in another area, you could have lessons over there, they're all going, they build these movable floors, so you can have three feet in one area and eight feet in another. Anyway, I hope that answered it. I don't know.
No, that answered it, but I just wanted to see clarification because I didn't come out in your presentation, because we are, I mean, well, I'm sure we'll ask somebody to ask administration in relation to timeline in relation to our Shiro amenities site and that timeframe, but I just wanted, I just wanted a clarification because when you and I last
Information I got from the architect, and I'll be glad to work with administration and help them do anything they need.
All right, Council Bromansky, you're up next. I'm just gonna remind everyone that we have two o'clock public hearing. Yeah. Council Bromansky, go ahead.
Thank you. Just one quick question before you run away. Do you see that there's a need for competition space in, in, you know, in the province or across Canada kind of thing for swimming events? Because I mean, Service Place is losing money right now. Do you see it as a possible moneymaker if that's?
I, I, I think so. I think Scott is much better at answering that.
Oh, okay, I'll wait for his presentation.
All right, next on my speakers list, I think I have Mika.
Hello.
You've got your mic, good.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Mika Bode. I am a swimmer, and I am a member of Service Place and Fountain Park, and I swim three times a week. I'm also a swim mom, and I have three kids in swimming. Their age is twelve, eight and six, and they swim for the Olympians and the sailfish. And I'm also a physiotherapist. I've been a physiotherapist for twenty-eight years, and I've worked for fifteen of those years at Service Place. And so I'm just here to advocate again, to support what Stuart was saying. I personally swim. In two thousand and three, I was hit by a car and paralyzed, so I use swimming as my main form of exercise. That's the main way I can stay healthy and fit without getting injured. So I am there three times a week at Fountain Park, swimming laps. There is constantly, when I am there, all the lanes are being used. So again, it's at full capacity. If there is an aquasized class at that pool at the same time, there is So, um, again, it's at full capacity. If there is an aqua-sized class at that pool at the same time, there is no parking. There is, uh, there's, um, not a single parking spot. So again, parking lot is full. So again, at capacity. Um, I'm also there, um, five to six times a week dropping my kids off for swim club. So I see the pool often throughout different times of the day. Change room, uh, cleanliness.
You still have time. No, batteries. I'd say we could hear you, but Council Broadhead not big. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so, uh, change room issue is, um, cleanliness is a huge issue. Um, very, very dirty. They, their traffic going through the change rooms is incredible. Um, they can't keep up with that. There is in the evenings, if I wanted to go swim.
They've got batteries here. We'll just pause.
Uh, in the evening, one lane is available for all of Saint Albert for swim, for fitness swimming. Um, there are swim clubs moving the pool between four and eight P M. So there is one lane available for fitness swimmers and often five to six people are piled in there. And I have heard of, um, problems, a lot of tension, harassment issues because of swimmers. Not agreeing on how to pass each other in the lane, so lots of threats. Um, with the swim lanes in the evenings. So again. If you were to watch in the evening when there are lessons going on, swim club. Multiple swim teams using the lane and fitness swimmers. It is like a bunch of sardines in the pool. You will see Glenn's team, the sailfish, green caps. About twelve to fifteen kids in a lane, swimming like sardines over top of each other.
There we go.
Yes. So, um, again, pool space is at a, is at a, at full capacity. Parking lot at full capacity using overflowing into Paul Kane High School parking lot. Um, so, and then cleanliness issues, tension issues in the pool itself. I, um, have three swimmers, um, at me.
Smack it.
We are using, um, Kinsman Sports Center in downtown Edmonton for swim meets. Often traveling four times a day for a swim meet per day. To drop off my kids for warm-ups in the morning for first session heats. And warm-ups in the evening for finals in the evening. Let's four trips a day to Edmonton. To repeat in a fifty-meter pool, um, in downtown Edmonton. And that does not include, um, practices during the week where there are necessities for, uh, driving kids twice a day. Downtown Edmonton, there's even a story of family, uh, needing to buy a hybrid or electric vehicle. Because they couldn't afford the gas to spend driving their three kids to downtown Edmonton multiple times a day. Um, for swim club. So again, this, we need, uh, pool space for, uh, some type of competitive swim training. Um, again, the pool space is at premium right now.
And. So I'm talking, uh, as a swim mom, as a physiotherapist, I wanted to say that I have seen literally hundreds of people come through our clinic. With hip and knee replacements, pre-operative, post-operatively. And I have also worked with veterans who have been, have degenerative disc issues, multiple joint degeneration. From working in the military and they need aquatic space to use for rehabilitation, for strengthening. Um, so again, and I often recommend, oh, count, use the water, go for swims, use, go to aqua-sized classes, walk in the water. So again, aquatic spaces at a premium, um, in this area also. And to conclude, I just wanted to say the multipurpose use of the pool would be for not only competitive swimming. You could use it for water polo, synchronized swimming, paddle boarding, kayaking, swim lessons.
Just tell you, five minutes is up, but I appreciate that. Sorry about the mic.
Okay, yeah, but no problem.
Yeah, I don't think I could project my voice that well, so I was pretty good. Yeah, uh, any questions for Mika? Not at this time. So next on my list, I think I have, is it Glenn next? No, I, Miles is next. Miles, yeah. Triathlon club.
Thank you, uh, mayor and councillors. Uh, my name is Miles Gibson. I'm the president of the Saint Albert Road Runners and Triathlon Club, commonly known as Start. Uh, we're celebrating our fortieth anniversary this year and in fact, we'll hold our thirty-fifth annual Saint Albert Sprint Triathlon. Um, I've also been involved as a co-race director of the Saint Albert Kids of Steel Triathlon. Um, lots of you have heard of that. Your kid's probably been in some of them, right? One of the interesting things about triathlon consisting of swim, a bike and a run is you need to swim, you need to learn how to swim. It's the hardest thing. It's the thing that stops people from doing a triathlon the most. I can't swim, why would I want to do a triathlon? So. Our club is in the process of revitalizing ourselves. You know, we've, a lot of the, the old organizers have gotten old, they've moved to B C. You know, they're not doing that anymore. So I'm in the process with my team of trying to increase membership in, in a younger age category. Uh, pretty much. Twenty to seventy, but mostly in the twenty to forty category. We have two active swim programs, uh, Start does. Uh, we rent ten lanes a week at Fountain Park Pool. Uh, I could easily sell double that. Um, so in fact, as a, as a sort of a win-win argument, um, to date, we've paid back to the city. Uh, almost sixteen thousand dollars in revenue and annualized, that would be about twenty-eight thousand. And I could easily add a third program. Um, and our, our athletes are not all high-end tri, you know, Ironman triathletes. They're everywhere from beginners who are just really there for the lifestyle, they're there to improve their health and wellness. To obviously the other end, people training for an Ironman like myself. Um, and, but again, we're so limited by space. We have our morning program and our evening program each have five lanes. I could take the whole pool for two hours if I had the ability to do that. Triathlon is a really unique sport and it's something that you don't see very often. It is so inclusive. We welcome everybody. Uh, pun intended, all you need to do is try. That's it. Okay, and, and that's about that. With that and a pair of swim goggles, you're in the game, right? So it's something that is very important, uh, within the city of Saint Albert. And I do want to take a quick minute to thank the city and everybody in it, uh, from the bottom of my heart for all that you do for us every year. For both our Saint Albert Kids of Steel Triathlon and the Saint Albert Sprint Triathlon. These two races, which are cherished by the way in the city, simply would not happen without your contribution. And I got to say thank you so much. Uh, back to the city for that. So again, in conclusion, what we need in Saint Albert. Is more aquatic space. Without it, I can't grow my triathlon club. Without it. More people can't, you know, at least consider the, uh, the chance to enjoy swimming and then obviously as an extension, triathlon. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from members of council? Seeing none, I'm gonna just quickly get to, now we have Glenn. Um, from the Saint Albert Gators Triathlon Team and the Sailfish.
Honorable mayor, esteemed councillors, I'm Glenn Wilson. I stand before you representing the Saint Albert Phys Ed Council. Comprised of four, uh, school districts in and around Saint Albert and with a student population of about twenty thousand. I've been, also been the head coach of the Saint Albert Gators Youth Triathlon Team and the Saint Albert Sailfish for about twenty-plus years. All of these organizations are vital in creating, sustaining and active and vibrant, uh, community through the delivery of fundamental movement skills necessary for healthy adult populations. Next week, at Leonikerson School I work at, uh, we will hold our eleventh annual We Try Triathlon. Five hundred and sixty students will do a team triathlon hosted by the Fountain Park Pool. This would have been year fourteen, but it has been closed for about three of those years. The event received international recognition in two thousand and seventeen as the largest youth triathlon in North America. Unofficially in Europe as well, uh, with officials, referees and race organizations and one, race organizers and one world, um, ranked athlete. Um, who came from around the world to observe the event. Um, and the comments afterwards were about our minor pool in a gorgeous city. And the pervasive comment from the, um, international referee or the international race organizer was, the world needs to know about this. The city of Saint Albert, uh, the Saint Albert Sailfish are the oldest continually operating competitive swim team west of Ontario. We are a member of the largest micro-season swim team organization in Western Canada, the A S S A. And we are the only, uh, licensed paraswim team in, uh, outside of, uh, outside of the University of Alberta. Uh, the Saint Albert Gators Triathlon Team has grown significantly in its twenty-five years, um, and can continue to grow, but our space, space in our pool is limited. And inconsistent. Notwithstanding that, the Saint Albert Sailfish and the Gators have produced provincial, national and Olympic athletes. All of this and more is now in jeopardy with myopic planning. In a city with the most consistent percentage of growth of any developing city in Canada, looking for a twenty-year solution to an aquatic deficit decades in the making. It's kind of sad. With the generous help of our, my colleagues and the Saint Albert-based think tank of esteemed experts, we have. We believe that there is a plan that meets the needs of our burgeoning aquatic deficit, uh, that makes Saint Albert. The potential hub of revenue generating, active lifestyle propagating swimming events. The ask is to push forward a fifty-meter pool, a fifty-meter ten-lane pool as an annex to the current service place facility. Albeit devoid of the trappings of a casually used chlorinated pond. A three-hundred-player hockey tournament is paltry next to the Thousand Swimmer, uh, Championships, answering your question. Um, that we could host in a proper facility. The cost recovery headaches of a waiting pool are all but lost when the multi-discipline facility sees constant bookings for triathlons. Competitive swimming, synchronized artistic swimming, water polo, lessons and master swimming. Each with their own revenue, revenue generating competitions and championships. Schools must also be an important part of this equation. Enveloped in the reciprocal use agreement, which somehow has been lost at Service Place, schools then feed an expanding energetic community. Swimming is the number one developmental sport in Canada and the number three youth sport. While seventy-eight percent of stick skills athletes drop out at age fourteen. Swimming retains the same number. As such, a fifty-meter ten-lane pool is not a luxury item. It has the potential to be the hub of a thriving city, the fluid. To keep, the fluid and the money to keep the energy of our home eternal. It starts with an immediate plan.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any questions? Before you escape the mic, I just want my council to know that in March, Mr. Wilson was the Rotary Teacher of the Month. And then we gave him the honor for, and you can see why with his passion that he's giving to the kids. I just wanted people to know that. So congratulations on that and thank you for speaking with us. I see no questions. So I think now we are going to have, is it, is it the big finale with Scott Flowers? I know they wanted you to go last.
Uh, okay. Thank you for having me. My name's Scott Flowers. Um, I've lived in Saint Albert for about forty-five years. I did all my grade schooling in Saint Albert. I graduated from Paul Kane, same time as. I'm a professional engineer working in Edmonton. Um, I was a competitive swimmer at every level, uh, of, of the sport in Canada. I, I started at the Saint Albert Sailfish Glenn's Club here in Saint Albert. I finished with varsity swimming and as a member of Canada's national team. And I spent my entire junior high and high school commuting into Edmonton to train twice a day. My kids, I have two kids who did all of their grade schooling in Saint Albert. Uh, they lived here for their whole swimming careers, uh, apart from varsity swimming. And they started with the Saint Albert Sailfish and they spent their entire junior high and high school commuting into Edmonton to train. I've been also officiating for twenty years in swimming and I'm currently a national level swimming official and so is my wife. We, uh, officiate all over Alberta and outside the province as well. And I'm also currently the president of Swim Alberta, which is the governing body for competitive swimming in the province. And we represent about twelve thousand five hundred swimmers in Alberta. Um, the vast majority of those swimmers are. Grade school kids. We have some elite swimmers in Alberta, of course, but you know, the swim, the sport is a pyramid, so majority of the members are kids. So I have a pretty good understanding of the sport of swimming, as you can imagine. With my background, you can infer that I'm mostly concerned about pool space that's. Uh, can be used for competitive swimming, but I'd also like to point out that. You can have swimming lessons and recreation and water size and splashing around with your kids in a rectangular pool. You can't do competitive swimming, water polo, triathlon training, synchronized swimming in a lazy river or a kidney-shaped hot tub. Swimming is a fundamental skill and it's one of the best sports for life. It's the largest organized youth sporting activity in Canada. There's about one point one million kids involved in an organized swimming program in Canada. Compared to about three-quarters of a million hockey players. It's also one of the most popular sports for girls in Canada. And well over half of our members in Alberta and in swimming across the country are girls. So. By having some beautiful hockey facilities in Saint Albert, but inadequate pool space, we are disproportionately underserving the girls in our community. When I first started swimming in Saint Albert in the nineteen seventies, we had a five-lane twenty-five-meter outdoor pool. This summer, fifty years later, when Fountain Park is closed for maintenance, we will have a five-lane, uh, twenty-five-meter outdoor pool. Again, and that's it. The only facility available for, um, aquatic sports. In that time, the population in Saint Albert has more than quadruple. And it's growing faster than ever, as we've mentioned before. Our lack of pools is even jeopardizing the ability of the Saint Albert Sailfish, which is one of the oldest, uh, continuously operating swim clubs in Western Canada to stay viable. The shutdown of the Fountain Park Pool, again, without another outdoor, uh, another indoor pool this summer will cap their numbers. And they'll be turning people away. They've been doing that for years now, turning people away. Um, at the Swim Alberta Board, which I'm the president of, I mentioned, um, a recent strategic planning sessions concluded this spring. And we heard from our constituent members, which are all the swim clubs in Alberta, that all of them are, or many of them are constrained by pool space. So this is happening across the province, um, and they're required to turn new members away. Based on what we see for demand at Swim Alberta and also what we're hearing from. The, the demand in the city, we think that, um, I think that, uh. Saint Albert needs somewhere between twenty-five and thirty lanes worth of twenty-five-meter pool space to meet the current demand. And that's just today. Um, even with Fountain Park in operation, we only have thirteen lanes of twenty-five-meter pool and only, Rovner is only open in the summer. So talking about what I think makes sense for additional pool space, a standard pool, uh, for competitive swimming. In this decade is a twenty-five by fifty-meter pool. Um, I've heard some people make reference to it being an elite facility, but that's sort of an outdated way of thinking about it. A fifty-meter pool, yeah, can be used for long course racing and we do a lot of that in competitive swimming. But, um. And in fact, Swim Alberta would be interested in hosting competitions in Saint Albert if, if a standard-sized pool was available here. Uh, but a twenty-five by fifty-meter pool can also be used for many other things. For example, if the lanes are set up across the pool instead of longways, it contains twenty, twenty-five-meter lanes. Five lanes could be used by Sailfish or a year-round club for training. Another four could be used by the triathlon club. Four could be available for public swimming. You could have water size and swimming lessons, all taking place at the same time. When we build service place, we've missed the opportunity to address the longstanding community demand for, uh, extra pool space that Stuart mentioned. Service place is still there though, and it represents by far the least expensive and fastest opportunity to put.
Your five minutes is up. We'll give you a couple of seconds just to wrap up, but I think, yeah, it's okay.
Uh, I just want to reiterate, uh, we would like you to please take action. Um, on what the citizens have been asking for, for fourteen years and get some additional pool space available in the shortest time possible. And we think that service place is the fastest and like least expensive way of doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions for Scott? I'm, I'm seeing none and, um, just going to let you guys know, two more speakers, uh, I'm not sure. Lynn, do you want us to wait till we actually get to the item on the agenda? Or do you want to speak now? That's fine. Okay, so we're going to go to Lynn next. You make your way up to the mic. Um, yeah. That's fine. Okay. So we're going to go to Lynn next. You make your way up to the mic. Um, yeah, go ahead. And then we're probably going to have to take a break to do the public hearings. We might not get to the questions of administration until after the public hearings, although. I don't expect the public hearings to be very long or, or at all. Um. And then, uh, we'll, I'm just going to say some general comments before Lynn goes up. Um. That I don't think you're asking for swimming is lost on any of us. It's, it is a priority. It's, um. So mostly about dollars right now. Currently, we're seeing our infrastructure dollars from the province cut in half, so we don't have a lot of infrastructure dollars to spend. Um, but I think I've said this to you, Stuart, in the past is. Some of the other sport groups, especially hockey, are so well organized and, um, can lobby. This is the first time I've seen the swimming group come together like this. And this is, this is what you, you need to do because it, it's impacted all of us. I'm sure I'm just speaking for myself and seeing nods, um, because it's hard when you've got such a powerful group in hockey and. And I'm glad you compared the two youth, uh, registrations in Canada, Scott, because that does really impact and. And, uh, anyway, so I'm just gonna make those general comments before we actually get to Lynn. And then we're going to probably have to take a bit of a break to do public hearings. There's two of them. They're easy. And then we'll get back to questions to our administration. So Lynn, you want to speak about the paving of the botanical gardens, right? Go ahead.
Yeah, my, uh, name is Lynn Rusnak. I'm the current president of the St. Albert Botanic Park. And I'd like to thank you for letting me speak today regarding the paving of the St. Albert Botanic Park. We believe the St. Albert Botanic Park's valuable asset for the city. Five acres along the Sturgeon River that we lease from the city has grown over the years to become a beautiful garden. That is one of the leading attractions when searching for things to do in St. Albert. The gardens are always open and free to walk through. Oh, how do I get to the next one? Oh, I might need some help here. I'm quickly running out of my, how do I go to the next one?
There we go. Community support right behind you.
Where's the right arrow? Oh, here we go.
There we go. Okay.
Visitors to the park from all around the world and sign our visitors book with comments about how beautiful our gardens are. The pictures they post to their social media feeds increase the awareness of St. Albert and all it has to offer. Uh, the Botanic Park has been featured on the CBC program, Our Edmonton. This also brings us recognition as a premier location to visit in the Edmonton area. We have regular visits from seniors groups that arrive by bus, story time with the library. Nate's multicultural students have used our park for their plant identification unit. And our rose gardens are always a popular venue for weddings. We estimate that, uh, ten thousand people visit the park each year. The park is financed and maintained by a group of volunteers that donate over thirteen thousand hours. Each year. Our team of volunteer, oh, of dedicated volunteers. Uh, are dedicated to provide quality experience for our visitors. One of our core values is to be accessible to all. To further the sex, uh, sex, accessibility initiative. We have created a system of paved walkways that access all areas of the park. Over the years, we have completed paths. From the parking lot all the way to the gazebo in the West End. The work has been progressing for more than ten years. In twenty twenty two, we were able to, uh, install memory lane. Uh, in the West Park, thanks for generous donation from Fran James, who was able to cut through the ribbon cutting. You probably recognize some of the other people in that picture. The other, um, the rose garden received a, uh. Connecting path in twenty twenty three and we celebrated the opening of Margaret's path. With the ribbon cutting of one of our founding members, Richard Plank. The one drawback to accessibility to our park is the parking lot. The parking lot is used not just by all visitors to the park, but it's also an access point to Red Willow Trail. The parking lot is a visitor's first experience and it's not always a welcoming one. It is often muddy, dusty and uneven. That's today in the rain with the pottles. The Botanic Park has been providing city with a beautiful Botanic Garden for over thirty years. Our society has maintained and financed the garden. Due to the time and effort of a group of volunteers, many of whom are here today. We are now asking the city to pave the parking lot to create a welcoming first impression. Thank you. Well under five minutes.
That was great. Uh, any questions of Lynn on her presentation? You have a question, Mike? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Lynn, thanks for coming in today and the slides and I think it. Picture speaks a thousand words, so, uh, great, great job. Uh, question, my, my understanding is that. Uh, in the past couple of years, the Botanic Park Group actually. Um, worked with the city to do a special little project to actually connect the, the trails within the park. To the walking trail.
Yes.
Along the river and, and you had to take that on yourself.
We took that on ourselves. We financed it ourselves. And the city's contribution was to changing our lease agreement. So that the maintenance of those extensions to connect with Red Willow Trail were actually our responsibility.
So you've worked really hard on the accessibility piece on behalf of the city.
Yes, very hard on accessibility.
And do, do you think paving the parking lot would, um. Give you opportunities for more revenue generation to make your, you more self sufficient?
Yes, I, I do believe that, um. The parking lot, like I say, is the first experience you have. Um, last summer, we actually had a wheelchair that kind of got bogged down in our. Um, parking, parking lot and we had to help him out. Um. We do get donations, which is one of our, our major funding sources. And, um, having a, a, a completed and beautiful park would attract more donations, more visitors. And I think it would definitely, uh, enhance the, uh, situation, the whole park.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anything else?
I see, because we're broadhead, no more. Okay, I see no more questions, so. We have five minutes before the public hearing starts, so staff are gonna switch chairs and get ready, so. Counsel, first of all, Emma, I still see you on the Zoom call. Are you there, Emma?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are you here to present or did you just want to answer questions when we get to the item?
Uh, I'm here to read the motion if it is pulled off of the consent agenda.
Okay, so I'm just gonna look at my councils. Anyone intending on pulling that one off of consent? There, that's a no. So Emma, it's gonna stay on consent, so we probably won't even need you to read the motion and, and answer questions. So I just wanted to let you know. Um, so you're not waiting around for that?
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you for coming. Uh, counsel. I guess we have time for like the quickest of quick questions if anyone has one for admin right now. You, I think it'd be easier to just do it all at once after the public hearings. Yeah, so. Let's take two minutes to stretch and then, uh, because we can't start till two because it's advertised for two o'clock, but right at two, we will start the first public hearing. We're gonna do all three readings today, so I'm gonna call the public, uh, hearing to order. And we, as you all know, these ones should be fairly simple, but I will open it up if there's any declarations of conflict of interest or pecuniary. And then seeing none from my counsel, I will then go to administration to make a presentation first. We actually have no registered speakers for the public hearings unless someone showed up since two o'clock to speak. I'm looking to see no hands up. I, I, Bladen, I know you're, you're registered. Um, did you want to speak to it or just ask questions? Okay, right. Same with you, Denise. Okay, all right. So let's start with our staff's presentation on the first one. We are screen sharing, yay. There we go. Now we can see your speaking notes. Sorry, we're just dealing with screen sharing of the. Presentation issues. Can we email the presentation to your different laptop? There we go. I don't care if we see the slides on the side. We're good with that. Yeah. Ready?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thanks. It's gone again. Should we all log out of Zoom and relog back in?
But we do get to look at you, Wes, and that is a consolation for us all.
Good afternoon. Sorry for the delay. Hopefully it works. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Uh, my name is Sajid Safad. I'm here with, uh. From Planning and Development to present bylaw nine, uh, two thousand twenty four regarding a land use bylaw redistricting in the Riverside neighborhood. Select Engineering, um, Limited on behalf of the property owner, Genstar Title Co. Limited, has applied for this redistricting application. The redistricting application applies to a vacant parcel of land located in the southwest portion of the Riverside neighborhood as shown on the map to the left. The map to the, um, right shows the specific areas subject to the proposed redistricting. Um, located south of Rankin Drive and west of Hogan Road. Hogan Road has now been renamed to Red Pole Wind. The applicant is proposing to redistrict, uh, zero point nine five hectares from low density residential district RX. To residential lane district, RXL, as shown on the map, to enable housing products with a rear lane access. The point eight five hectare portion is proposed to be redistricted. From RXL to RX in order to enable housing products with front access onto Hogan Road. The proposed changes align housing products to be located adjacent to similar forms of respective access. The future land use map to the left shows the approved circulation patterns in the inset map. The proposed circulation patterns deviate slightly to what is shown in the Riverside. Area Structure Plan land use concept, uh, as shown on the map to the right. The, uh, area structure plan enables minor changes in circulation patterns without requiring an area structure plan amendment. A future, uh, area structure plan amendment can be undertaken to update, uh, the plan. And incorporate such minor changes that occur through the, uh, development process. The proposed amendment was circulated on January the 3rd, 2024 to internal departments, external agencies, and to landowners within a hundred meter radius of the subject property. A large format sign was also posted on site. There were no concerns with this application. In closing, the proposed redistricting is supported by both the Riverside Area Structure Plan and the Municipal Development Plan Flourish. Therefore, administration recommends approval of the proposed redistricting as presented to you today. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, council, it's your opportunity to ask any questions of our administration. Councilor Killig, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I just, a quick question on the, the 8.5 hectare site where we're changing it to uh, front access onto, I think, is it Red, Red Pole Way?
Wind.
Wind?
Wind, yes.
Okay, Red Pole Wind. Will the land, I think, to, on the bottom of the slide, and, south, I guess, uh, is that the access point to White Spruce Forest, or is that, it's marked as municipal reserve, 503 municipal reserve, right where your cursor is? Uh, my question is, will, will that front access affect traffic flows into what I think is eventually the future location of, uh, the parking lot access? Or is it somewhere else?
Through you, uh, Madam Mayor, that is correct. That, uh, previously Hogan Road will provide access to the MR to the south. The, the front access, um, like, the density implications are unchanged. So what was previously flowing through the road and going into a laneway will now have front drive access. So, so the, the point of is the overall traffic, um, flow shouldn't be impacted.
It should not be.
Should not be impacted.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's the only question I had.
Thank you.
Awesome. Councilor McKay, we can't take a motion until we go to the public. John, we got any more questions of our administration? Alright, since there's no presentation from the proponent, is there any questions for Denise or Bladen? Seeing none, Councilor McKay, I'll go to you.
Alright, uh, I'm gonna motion that the public hearing on Bylaw 9/2024 be closed.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Councilor McKay, do you want to keep going?
Sure, I can. That Bylaw 9/2024 being Amendment 220 to Land Use Bylaw 9/2005 be read a first time. No comments.
No comments, okay. Anyone else have any comments? Call for the vote. Sorry, this lamp is right. Voting's closed. That is unanimous. A second reading?
That Bylaw 9/2024 be read a second time.
Uh, call for the vote. Thank you. Voting's closed. That's unanimous. Councilor Hughes?
That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of Bylaw 9/2024.
Alright, the call for the vote. Voting's closed. That's unanimous. Councilor McKay?
That Bylaw 9/2024 be read a third time.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that's unanimous. That's done, redistricted, all good to go. Go build some houses. Now we haven't, Bladen, you're sticking around, aren't you? Okay, uh, Bylaw 11, uh, North Ridge Phase 2, uh, third redistricting and a LUB Schedule A amendment. So I will call the public hearing on Bylaw 11, 2024 open. We will do the same process. We've got Eric coming in, or do we? I have Eric, sir. Go ahead, Leder.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Lenore Mitchell, Senior Planner, here to present Bylaw 11, 2024. This is a redistricting for North Ridge Phase 2 neighborhood with the marketing name Nouveau. The applicant is Select Engineering Consulting on behalf of Badger Land Development Corporation. The developing neighborhood is located in the north part of the city, north of Villeneuve Road and west of Hogan Road, Range Road 255. This is the North Ridge Phase 2 Area Structure Plan Future Land Use Map. The dark, black lines are the two areas being districted. The ASP shows the area as Low Density Residential, which is colored in yellow. The pink arrow shows Night Bloom Drive, which will connect to two new roadways in this development. The applicant is proposing to redistrict approximately four hectares or 10 acres from urban reserve UR, a holding district until urban development occurs on the land. Districting to Residential RX and Residential Lane RXL and Public Park P. The public park is a little sliver in the lower southwest corner as part of a larger stormwater management facility. The districting application was circulated to internal and external stakeholders, as well as properties within a hundred meter radius. No objections or concerns were raised. In conclusion, the proposed redistricting does align with the MDP and the North Ridge Phase 2 ASP. Administration supports the approval of Bylaw 11, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenore. I need to tell Eric he never looked better. Any questions of our administration on this redistricting? Go ahead, Councilor Killig.
Um, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. If, if you could pull the slide up, um, I'm just curious as, I, I know the, the park is actually big stormwater. I drive by it quite often. And I, I just can't see how it, um, the, the walkway around the park actually connects to any public access to make it, you know, like a park, like even to walk around. So I don't, I don't know if that shows on the map as to how, how we actually have access to any walkway around that stormwater pond to, and maybe I just missed.
Yeah, so here, so the blue, it's elongated stormwater and then a, a big, uh, square on the bottom. So it, it's a, uh, I don't know what kind of shape you call that. Anyways, so the black dashed dots on the left of the big square, that's basically where the walkway is. So it doesn't really go all around the park, uh, the pond at all. It's just on the, uh, left side of it.
Just connects it to Villeneuve, okay.
So it's, so it's connected, to call it a park, I think people would envision that they would have access to it.
Yes, this is a confusing part. So it's a stormwater pond that gets a land use districting of public park. That is how you district a storm pond. So that's why I wanted to be very clear. The sliver of park is really part of a storm pond. So it's not like a big play space. No.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess that's like a.
Those are those confusing definitions we have in our LUB.
Right.
Just like urban reserve, people think it's reserve land, right?
For future use, yeah. So it's a troubled cliff or whatever shape piece.
We just like to keep you confused.
Bring it up when the LUB comes in front of us.
It would need a whole new district, but so it's just easier with park, because sometimes park is attached, so.
For sure, yeah. Councilor Hughes?
Thanks. So, out of curiosity, was this the original density plan for these two pieces of land? Was it to be at this level of density, or is it a different density than when the first, when we first approved this?
So in the area structure plan, the density range for low density is 23 to 33 hectares. And this is coming in at about 25. So it's within the range that was, uh.
Initially proposed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any further questions of administration? Council Broadhead, you're good? Okay. Uh, how about, uh, any questions of the proponent? I see Courtney is late. You're not here. Oh, she, awesome. Okay, uh, but is there any questions of either Bladen or Courtney? I see none. Alright, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Councilor McKay.
That the public hearing on Bylaw 11/2024 be closed.
Perfect. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Uh, who can I pick on? Councilor Hughes, you want to do this one? Oh, Mike wants to do it. Go ahead, Mike.
That Bylaw 11/2024 being amended, Amendment 221 to the land use by law 9, 2005 be read a first time.
Any comments on this one?
Uh, pretty straightforward and meets the density target, so all good.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. Uh, that was first reading, second reading, Councilor Killig?
That Bylaw 11/2024 be read a second time.
Anything further?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Unanimous consent from Councilor Romansky?
That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of Bylaw 11/2024.
Perfect, thank you. Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that is unanimous. We can go to third reading. Go ahead.
That Bylaw 11/2024 be read a third time.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Alright, that is our end of our public hearings. Thanks, everyone. And so we're gonna flip backwards in time to uh, business arising from the presentations we heard today. So we can take questions around the, the festival parade, um, swimming, of course, or I would save questions on the paving of Botanic Park to actually get to that agenda item. So who wants to go first? Councilor Romansky, go ahead.
Um, I don't really have any questions for administration other than, um, you know, uh, forming a motion to, uh, give the $3,000 to the, uh, kinsmen.
You have, I think we have that ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get to that in a sec. Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Hughes?
Uh, thank you. I'm not sure if it's to administration or actually to Stuart. It was a hindsight thought process. When they came forward, when the Stuart came forward, he mentioned that he thought the pool cost to be 35 million. But what I don't know is how many lanes that was for. So, uh, because there has been discussion of.
Just, just yell it out, Stuart.
Yeah. For 10 lanes? Okay.
10 lane 50 meter pool for 45 million.
Okay. So, and did that include an expansion to the change rooms in your thought process? It did include that. Okay. Because I was just trying to figure out what we were, so would a 10 be a 25 by 50 meter pool? Okay, so that was what you were suggesting. Okay, so just for people at home, it included everything that you could need, including mechanical and the building envelope, just because they won't be able to hear you. Um, okay, so that's kind of what I was looking at. And we had, so too, I'm looking, looking at you Diane, because I think this is your area, I'm guessing. No, it's not, it's your area. Okay, temporarily.
I think we've got people online too.
Okay, you can redelive.
Online for recreation.
Probably, Diane. So I guess I'm just, we had an estimate before to an expansion, um, to service place. But my understanding was, if I remember correctly, it was for 25 meters and not for 50, right? So, um, I'm gonna look at you Danielle, because you're, you're up on the screen.
Yeah.
Um, so if that's the right person to ask, okay. So have we considered a 50 meter envelope, or have we ever considered a 50 by 25? And just like, I guess, from chicken scratching idea, do we have the space to put that size pool over there?
So through the chair to Councilor Hughes, um, we did a study in 2018 on a 25 meter pool, to your point. Um, and it, it did come in at a 15 to 20 million dollars in 2018 pricing, uh, for that type of structure. We did not do any assessment of a 50 meter pool structure, so that would require some more work on administration's end in terms of, um, assessing the ability for that site to, uh, host a facility of that size, um, attached to Service Place.
So I'm not sure, I, I'm not gonna do anything specifically. We'd have to give notice or anything else, but I'm not sure what the process would be. I know I asked before about the cost to upgrading. We don't have that. So what would we be looking at for a cost to actually get a, a reasonable?
Accurate.
Yeah, reasonably accurate, um, idea of what it would cost and what's all involved in trying to make we did 25 or a 50 meter pool, how far we could go and, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor. Certainly, um, Diane, please feel free to chime in, but I think we'd need a funding source and we'd have to do our homework and come back to you on what that would be.
Okay. If it's possible in the next week or so, uh, just, just tell me what the steps are that you want or how much money you'd want to have it happen. I mean, council can make the decision if they want to move forward on that or not, but just that we at least know what it would be. Um, the other thing was that I'm pretty sure as well, we were discussing the community amendee site, there was only discussion again of the 25 meter pool. So even if we were to build another one, it still wouldn't leave you at the 50 meter issue. Is there actually room over there to do a 50 meter if we wanted to? I think that the envelope was just 25, is that right?
Yeah, and I think that was with the overall footprint, but I'll ask Danielle to, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, through the chair to Councilor Hughes, you are correct that the footprint that we have available on that site is for a 25, well, it's for, um, an aquatic facility similar in nature to what we had at Fountain Park, which would have a leisure pool and a 25 meter comp pool. Um, so that would be included within that site. I, there is not, in the current footprint of what we have committed on that site per building structures, room for a 50 meter pool at this point. And we haven't committed that within the concept as approved by council.
No, I, I hear you. I'm just trying to make sure we all have an accurate picture of what we have and versus what's being asked for. So from what I'm hearing, if we were to want to go down the 50 meter lane, which we may or may not want to, but if we did, the only location that I can see off the top of my head is the Tixpan Service Place. Would that be fair, or do you think that there's others if you went back and thought about it or something?
Through the chair to Councilor Hughes, I would say as Recreation and Parks, our direction from council has been to continue investment, time and commitment and resources into the development of the Northwest side in Sherrill. Um, and that has been our commitment at this point. So, um, I would say it would take either a redo of, or a tweaking of the existing concept plan there, or, um, some investigation on the site at, um, that Service Place. Um, there are some intricacies to a 50 meter pool that I think, um, would be good to discuss as well through council, um, if you wanted to approach that, um, and take that on and look at that as an option, uh, to consider for future.
Okay, and, because I, don't, don't get worried Danielle, I haven't done anything yet, so just, just don't worry, okay? We're just talking right now, okay? Um, and in the community amendees, when are we looking, like, I know, I know it's gonna be a next council's decision, but are we looking at a build time completion for the next 25 meter pool of, I think, is it 2028? I should have, I looked at the capital plan, I should have been looking at it more carefully in that. Do you think we're gonna actually potentially build the unit, the, the facility that has a pool in it?
Certainly, uh, through the chair to Councilor Hughes, we have this as a, as a gated approach with council approval at each step. So at this point right now, we're continuing on the work that council has designated with regard to the existing concept that you've approved. So we are working on technical studies on the site. We are also working on the partnership modeling to see if there are partnership opportunities to investigate, which will be coming back to council later this year on. Um, we would plan in our 26 charter submissions, we are planning at this point to put in for detailed design in the 26 year, which would then mean that, um, the phasing of the construction would be queued out within the debt strategy as well, um, for future after that. But I would say it, it could start as, as approved by council, um, as we gate through that approach.
So it could start the build by 2027 or 2028 earlier?
Yeah, I would say that would be the earliest. As we work through design in 26, you would need at least a year or two, a year and a half to work through the design, um, and then a phasing that out, um, depending upon council's approval of, of funding for the construction.
Okay, and then I just have one more. So, because the only other concern I have right now is, let's say we were to go down the 50 meter pool and expansion at Service Place. I'm not sure, I guess this will be a council decision at the time about. I'm not sure, I guess this will be a council decision at the time about building a fifty-meter in one location and a twenty-five-meter in another location. Almost simultaneously. So if we were to do the fifty-meter route. I guess, and this is not necessarily an answer for you to get back with right now, Danielle, or any of it, is when you come back and talk to us about just the costs as well. To investigate it would be, would we really want to redesign then the community amenity site? If we were to put a fifty-meter at Service Place and maybe put some other amenity there in its place? And what that might entail, I guess, for like the full picture, or if we think that we should. Continue with both because they provide different services in some way. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it is, it is complex in that nature in that if you build a fifty-meter pool, then we have maybe different needs. So I think it's taking our needs assessment and really building that out a little bit more if we decide to proceed, if council were to decide to proceed with a fifty-meter pool. There are some challenges with what that serves and, and I think then that we have to look at, do we need a twenty-five-meter pool, to your point? In addition to that, or would you want to see one replace the other and repurpose some of that space? It could create a different dialogue that we want to have depending on the direction you proceed.
So I guess I'll just finish this. Like, if you can give us a bit of more, an idea of like the possible, as Council Mackay would say, unintended consequences. And the potential steps, because I also understand, Danielle, like you and your staff are moving forward on this one amenities. And this could hijack it and put everything into a derailment, and I don't want to necessarily derail everything that's been done to date. Right? Because you guys are working hard on this stuff. So I hear you when you're saying that. I just think that in light of what we've heard today, I'd like to know what the steps are so that we don't go down something and create a problem that we weren't intending to create.
Yeah, if I could just jump in, I think, you know, we could certainly map out. Rough estimate, yes, a fifty-meter pool would work, no, it wouldn't, at the service and get a rough cost estimate. I would not propose that we alter our approach right now as it relates to the work being done to set the conditions for success for the community amenities site. And you're quite right. If council were to decide one. A service place solution as an example, I think we'd have to go back to first principles and look at that community amenities site and what that would mean in terms of. Footprint facilities and timelines. Likely, there would be an impact there. And so we can absolutely do the homework with no. No significant issue on the fifth, the potential for fifty-meter pool at service. But the more detailed analysis, I would not propose doing unless council made a decision to do it, because it'll take our eye off the prize.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, Mr. Fletcher, if like it's. Two thirty, an hour and a half into our council meeting, and I don't want swimming in the pool to hijack the agenda. Would it, I know Council Broadhead has a question, Council Killick has a question, I don't know what they're on, so I would presuppose, but. Is it worth a one-hour? Something addition to a committee of the whole meeting or something to have this conversation?
Certainly can. I think we can come back and, and provide perhaps a little more context.
Yeah, and, and maybe, you know, you've heard a bunch of things from our residents today that you might want to do some research on and investigate before. Because you don't have answers to half our questions, I bet, right now. Okay, I'm seeing some nods. But I will go to Council Broadhead just to see what you wanted to ask a question. Oh, your hands down. Are you, you good?
Well, given what you just said, that would meet my need exactly. So if we have a, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm open now.
And I would too, Mayor.
Okay, and Council Killick?
Likewise, my, my questions were somewhat hypothetical to.
And detailed and, okay.
So.
So why don't we kind of convene and maybe even if council, if you have some kind of pre-questions that you could just sort of. Fire into emails just to get the brain juices flowing and then, Mr. Fletcher and I can schedule. I can't see this being more than an hour conversation, probably a committee of the whole. Okay, thanks. But I'm going to go back to Council Romansky. Because she had, she wants to make a motion for, like, to essentially give K forty-three thousand dollars above and beyond her. I think there's a motion ready.
Okay.
Okay, I'm seeing a nod. There you go. Do you want to read that in and see if that meets your needs?
Sure. Notwithstanding council policy C C C two-three civic granting. The city provide three thousand dollars to be funded from the Community Events Fund to the K forty Club of St. Albert Rodeo. To help fund the twenty twenty-four Rainmaker Rodeo and that a full event accounting be provided to the city. Within sixty days of the conclusion of the event.
Perfect. Before I accept it, does that meet your needs?
It's good.
Okay, just, and before I accept it, does anyone have any questions of the motion? My quick question is, do we have the money in the Community Events Fund? Seeing nods, yes?
Yes, my understanding is we do.
Okay.
Just a point of order, just in relation to this, I mean, is it germane to the, is it because we're dealing with?
Business arising.
Business arising, so we don't need the twenty-one day wave.
No, I'm fine with it, yeah.
Is that right?
Okay. It's germane.
I said romane.
All right, I'm seeing no objections to anyone from be accepting the motion now. Go ahead, Council Romansky.
Thank you, and I know this is, you know, normally out of our policy here, but it is an emergent item. And I mean, I commend the, the K forty for making the rodeo a successful event already. And it sounds like it's going to be amazing this coming year. And then going forward, they'll deal with their community civic granting again through due process. And continue providing great rodeo events for the city.
Anyone else have any comments on the K forty motion? Seeing none, I'm just going to call for the vote then. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. There you go. It's not easy. No, thank you again for doing all the volunteering. I think it's. You've amped up the parade a bit this year and it's going to be fantastic and we'll get the word out. We'll be busy. It's okay for raids. Okay, an hour and a half into the agenda, we're now on to consent agendas. Anyone want to make that motion? Go ahead, Council Hughes.
That the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, six point one, regular council meeting minutes of April sixteen, twenty twenty-four, and nine point two. Community Services Advisory Committee recommendations, twenty twenty-four Community Capital Grant Program.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes. So we just passed on consent the minutes from April sixteenth. Finished the public hearings, we are now on to the ten-year capital growth plan. And we have two council motions that we need to debate before we actually can approve the, the plan. So I'm going to go to eight point one, which is a Public Works Satellite Yard Take It or Leave It Facility. Notice was given by Council Hughes. I'll get you to read the motion in and then we can ask questions.
Sure. That the ten-year capital plans updated to re-scope Public Works zero eight one eight. Public Works Satellite Yard Capital Charter to include a Take It or Leave It Facility.
All right, any questions on this topic, anyone? Sorry. Ken has a question. There goes.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Council McCarr. I know it's slow.
I, I know it says it in the backgrounder, but I mean, the intent is, is that this will still go through the prioritization matrix. In relation for consideration and for our next year's budget deliberation process.
That's correct. As part of the, the capital plan, it will always go through the prioritization matrix. Thank you.
Can't see Council Broadhead. Any questions? Council Broadhead, you're good. Okay.
I'm good.
All right, I'll accept the motion. Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Thank you. So I don't think there's a lot to say about this. We already heard a presentation from administration about. The public were able to do it, and really this was the easiest for. The logistics of being able to maintain the facility once it's opened is to be able to do it next to recycling yard. In part because there will be just a lot of boxes and other things have to be recycled. Because it will be that popular that you will have a fair bit that has to be transferred around. So I can see the value in this. If we put it in the capital growth plan, it's not guaranteeing it's going to happen, and it still gives the council, whenever this comes into debate. The opportunity to re-scope it at that time if they so choose. All it simply does is put it there in the front for discussion. Almost like a placeholder, so that if it does get built, so we make sure we have the space to accommodate this facility, because it will be popular and it will require some land. In addition to requiring capital, obviously. And then the entire administration of it and maintaining it, we can. We'll have some time to figure out how to work that through and potentially with another organization to reduce any type of costs with that. But that's down the road. Right now is just simply putting it here so that we don't forget that this is really will be a very popular facility once it is built. It requires the land and it does require to be next to a Public Works Satellite Yard to be able to work the best possible. So this would just allow this to be brought forward for discussion when it comes time to do it at budget at some year. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on the motion? Council Killick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm really. Having a hard time with this one to, to put this. I, I said it when it came forward at Committee of the Whole, that there, there are so many other opportunities for upcycling. Within our community. And they, they cover everything under the sun. Paint, jewelry, household items, electronics. Garden pavers, just about everything that I could possibly imagine is, is available. And, and listed on the, the seven or eight and, and maybe even more. Upcycle pages that are available right now. So I, I see this as, as working well in the community. As well as residents can post on Edmonton upcycle pages. So that's even, there, there, there's many, many, many more of, of those type. Opportunities. The, the other. Challenge I have is that this relies on volunteers. And my, my concern is that volunteers are being, you know, a scarce commodity these days. Across all of our, our, our good things that we, we want to do in the, in the community. And let alone the capital costs and then ongoing operational costs for a service level, which is essentially already being provided. So I'm, I'm wondering why we would. Put this even into our capital plan. When there, when it comes with so many other strings attached, one, one being that. We, we already have facilities available, let, let alone all the other. Reuse stores that we can donate to. So not, not only those. As well, that goodwill and, and the other thrift stores, Losique, et cetera. Which, which generate revenue in the community. And, and support jobs for, for those in need, et cetera. So I'm just wondering if this is the right type of item to be putting, to be contemplating at this time. When it, there, there's already ways to do this. It comes at no cost to the city. And it relies so, so much, not only capital cost to build, but operating cost to have a person there all the time. And then have so, so much reliant on volunteers that are a scarce commodity in the community. So I'm, I'm really struggling to say, should this be added to the capital plan? If during the prioritization process, it, it wouldn't make, potentially. Whether it's this council or, or the next council or, or future councils, would it even make the cut to, to be looked at? So I'm. Struggling to see whether I, I would support adding this to the list and then not have it go any further than that.
All right, Council Broadhead, you're good. I see no one else wanting to jump in, and I'm just going to say. I love this idea of the take or leave it type. What do we call it? In Hodgepodge Lodge. And. I actually was chosen to sit on a panel today, this morning, because I have such a passion for garbage. But very much like Council Killick, I feel like what we have in the community is working. The St. Albert Upcycling Page Administrator contacted me shortly after we had our presentation at Committee of the Whole. And she reminded me that there are sixteen thousand people who have liked that page and, and it's working really well. And your arguments, very, I'm a huge supporter of goodwill. Where I donate all my stuff because most of the, they do an amazing job of stuff that doesn't get bought or used. Because they have recycling capacity that I've never, like, I've never seen. You really need to go see the eco center that Goodwill has. And then, not the one in St. Albert, the one on the West End. And, and plus there's employment opportunities for kids with disabilities at that place. So there is a cost to having something sit on our capitalist and have it, the project charters updated annually. And then they go through the process and they never hit the priority. So I think at this time, the million-dollar price tag is what's scaring me off on this one, and I think we should probably try to invest our dollars elsewhere. And keep with what's working because it's working quite well. Council Hughes, I'm sure you're going to have something to close.
Yeah, sure. So a couple of things. First of all, when Sturgeon Sherwood Park built theirs, they didn't build it for a million, they built it for three hundred thousand. So we can build it for a million, we can build it for less. It just depends on your motivation and how you do it. They upcycled and recycled a lot to do the actual building. I don't believe this most, this cost includes that. But Sherwood Park really wanted to see this happen. And what they're taking in their facility is not what's being sold in Goodwill. It's not, it's being available on any of the upcycle Facebook pages. So I, I can see why you might be challenged. If you haven't actually gone there, before I went, I thought, meh, what's so great about it? And then I went there and I'm like, wow, they, they uptake in and transfer so many items. That you are throwing away without even thinking about it in your daily household that somebody else could use. And it's, and you know, it's difficult to say, I'm going to give away these like little things that would be such a pain. To actually put on Facebook and try to redo, 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 and so you just throw them away. But in reality, there is somebody who wants a hundred and fifty different margarine containers. And yes, you can ask for it and you can drive all around the city and pick it up, or you can go to one spot, pick it up and get it back. But they're removing hundreds of thousands of tons of items that would be going to landfill. That are now no longer going to landfill. The popularity of the Hodgepodge Lodge tells you exactly how much it is appreciated by this community. And the fact is that Sherwood Park has upcycling and Sherwood Park has Facebook pages and Sherwood Park has everything that we would have. But they also have the Hodgepodge Lodge that is filling in a gap that the other facilities are not doing. It's simple as that. So if we choose not to move forward with it, okay, then I guess they will have that. It's an amazing facility that they've shown that how you can remake things that seem not worth anything suddenly valuable. And we can go back and say, everybody can post things on Facebook and remove one item at a time on Facebook and coordinate with fifteen people. So you can get rid of some very odd item that they have, that they, somebody else would grab. But these are not things that go to Goodwill. These are not things that were easily sold, and these are not things that you would see on Facebook. And the list of things that they've thought of that people give away is phenomenal. So when I saw this, that's why I thought, I know this community would love this. I know that this would be embraced about having something that's not have to continue to go to landfill. We continually talk about, we want to get rid of landfill, that people sending to landfill. This is an opportunity for people to easily do it. I don't know why on earth we would not want to at least continue the conversation on how to do it. And if we put it in here, we can still have the conversation with administration of like, this is the cost of it. How can we now do it for less? Because the reality is that it was done for seventy percent less than what was brought forward as the business case for this. So the, the cost certainly could go down. Organizations for volunteers, yes. We would have to work with again and find, what I would say is you find an organization that would partner with us. That, like, such as the Community Food Bank or something of that nature, that would also be able to do it perhaps as some kind of a fundraising thing for themselves. We partner and then have them work it out. That's just an idea of how we can handle it. We don't have to sit here and personally organize all the volunteers because we don't specialize in that. But we could certainly find another organization that want to partner and make this happen, because people really do appreciate the fact that they would have this type of a service. And so, you know, I guess the reality is you can think of a thousand reasons not to do it. Or you can just to say, you know what, why don't we just see what we can do? And at the end of the day, if this comes forward for twenty twenty-five and. We say we were going to reduce the scope at that time, reduce the scope. All the background work has already been done on this. And I, I know we can do it for less if we wanted to. I know that we can bring it down the cost for the operations, and I just know that the community would really appreciate having it. I personally just went to the Hodgepodge last this weekend and dropped off another thirty pounds of stuff. And, and it felt good to know that it wasn't going into the garbage. And it would not have gone to any other place other than the Hodgepodge Lodge, because no one else would have accepted that stuff. So, I mean, to me, I think that just putting it in here as a placeholder, and again, if we say that that time it's not worth it, okay? Bare minimum is to at least have the land available so that in the future, if you change your mind, at least you can restructure it and put it in. But if we don't actually even include that, we haven't even got the land for it, and you're basically saying no for it. But if we don't actually even include that, we haven't even got the land for it, and you're basically saying no for it in perpetuity. I'd rather at least leave our options open so that they say, here's the public's work yard, and we say, don't build it, but save the land. But if we don't have it in there, neither is going to happen. That's all. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with Mayor Heron and your Council Kilik opposed. And now we're on to your motion, Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just read it in eight point two on the agenda. It's that project charter be developed for paving the St. Albert Botanic Park parking lot for addition to the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty three, or or excuse me, twenty thirty four Municipal Capital Growth Plan.
All right, before I actually accept that, I'll go to question the Council Hughes has wanted to start.
So to admin, if this were to pass, I don't think I saw, and if I did, please forgive me. Do we have an idea of what year we'd be kind of monkeying this little guy into the capital plan?
Yep, thank you, Councilor. Not necessarily. I, Donnie George, I believe, is online. I'll ask her if she's got an answer to that question.
Thank you for the question through the chair to Councilor Hughes. This, if this gets approved to create a project charter, it still has to go through the prioritization and budget deliberations. So likely the earliest is twenty twenty five, or depending on how the money falls into the total bucket.
Okay, so if it were to pass, it would still be because I mean, everything in twenty twenty five is not going to make it. It's going to be like the funded and unfunded. But I guess would it be in the funded, unfunded list for twenty twenty five, or is it we're thinking funded, unfunded list for even later, like?
Well, I think it's it's, once, once it's added to the list, it's on the list, and we would work to prioritize it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Council Bromansky.
Thank you through the mayor to administration. When we had the speaker presenting to us, it kind of resonated with me that she said, you know, they've been volunteering and doing things there thirty years. Has this been discussed in the past or?
I'll ask perhaps both Donnie and Danielle to speak about that. We did do a bit of a historical look specifically at what we've got on record and grants. And so perhaps Danielle, I'll ask you to comment first, and Donnie, please feel free to chime in.
Sure. Through the Chair to Council Bromansky, we have not received an official request. This is the first official request, I would say, today that the group has made to ask the city to pave this lot. We work with them on all of their other projects. They are a valued local community organization, and we work with them on all of their projects. So when they did do pathway work, we'll work with them on that or on their lease lines. We also have done a track back through twenty, two thousand and nine, and have not received an application through our granting programs for this project. Since two thousand and nine, we very, we will track back that fourteen years and do not have record of an application for this project within our community capital funding stream. And I'm not sure, Don, if you have anything else to add.
Nothing. You covered it. Thank you.
Okay, and my other question would be in your prioritization list, would you be redoing parking lots? Do you have a schedule for those that would come ahead of any new parking lots, or how's it organized?
Sorry, thank you for the question.
Yeah, I see Dean coming up. Donnie, I'll ask you if you want to take a first stab at it or pass it on.
Sure, I will have Dean to speak to. Right now, we don't have it on the list. This was taken out in twenty twenty one, the whole charter. But Dean, probably you can add more context to it. Thank you.
No, I mean, that's, thank you very much, Donnie. That's largely, there was a charter that had been developed based on council requests. And at the time, unfortunately, through the years, it wasn't highly prioritized. It didn't make it through the charter prioritization process. And eventually kind of came off in the grand scheme of things from that capital listing. And today, we have no alternative programs. We have an RMR program, just for clarity, associated with existing paved structures, but we don't have anything in regards to paving existing gravel structures associated with a proactive charter or funding program.
Okay, thank you. Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the administration, just want to go through the the backgrounder a little bit. So the the city leases property to not-for-profits throughout the city, and some of them have gravel lots attached to it. Is that is that correct?
That is correct, Councilor.
Okay, so and and as I understand what's written here, normally the the responsibility to maintain the gravel parking lots is actually the requirement of the leaseholder or the person that's you know, in agreement with the city for this particular land. Is that correct?
That that is also correct, yes, Councilor.
Okay. However, for the for the botanical gardens, we have sort of an agreement that we'll actually support them by putting gravel down if they ask for it.
Yes, Councilor, that's correct.
Okay. So so I and I raise that because there was a question, there was a picture today of of the parking lot that wasn't in very good shape because of the rain. So I I'm assuming that, you know, the city will be getting a request for new gravel there to upgrade the parking lot. So you did some work around granting to the botanical gardens people since two thousand and nine. How much, how much have they actually received in grant funding from the city over those years?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor. I will defer that to Danielle.
Through the Chair to Council Broadhead, the group has received approximately a hundred and sixty six thousand dollars in community capital funding since two thousand and nine. That funding has been used for a variety of projects in their, within their facility, including irrigation systems, a number of pathway work initiatives that they have undertaken, as well as some operational equipment like snow plows. And most recently, they got funding in twenty twenty three for their second garage on site, which would make them eligible to reapply for community capital funding in twenty twenty five.
Okay, fair enough. So in in reality, if if the like the paving is a little bit tough because it's a big dollar amount, to be sure. But it's not out of the question that they could apply for community capital grant for their for their parking lot, is that correct?
Through the Chair to Council Broadhead, that is correct. They would be able to eligible to apply for community capital projects again in twenty twenty five in alignment with the the process around the community capital grants. We also support our local not-for-profit groups when they make application to groups like the Province of Alberta for things like the Community Facility Enhancement Program or the like. So if they're putting together grant applications, we can support them in that initiative as well.
All right, fair enough. Thank you for that information. It just adds context to how I'm going to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Broadhead. Council Bromansky, you're up next. You already had yours. You you're still there. Sorry, and Council Kilik, you're good?
Oh, I had I had a couple of questions.
Okay, keep going.
If I could. So just just to understand the comment about they could apply for a capital facilities grant. My my understanding that's capped at a hundred thousand dollars maximum. So there's no way they could pave the parking lot with a hundred thousand dollars. That would that would take ten years of of granting to to get enough to to even do the bare minimum of parking lot.
Relying solely on that funding avenue, yes, you know, there's certainly the opportunity to pull together grants from different orders of government or different areas with fundraising. But yes, you're you're right, Councilor.
Yeah. So, okay, so just, I just wanted to make it clear because it sounded like, well, there were other avenues to to get money and so just clarity on that one. My my understanding, the the other parking lots are are things that are still gravel. Are things like the Ball Diamonds, the Slow Pitch, and and this is just me guessing. Heritage Park, which is going to be repaved when we, you know, build out the heritage site and and even I think White Spruce Forest may have some gravel there today, but it is planned to be repaved or paved, I should say. Is are those the kind of parking lots? Because I I can't think of thirteen gravel parking lots in the in the city that are in heavy use, day-to-day, full summer, fall, spring usage. I don't know if there's, if administration could give us some other examples.
Yeah, I saw Mr. Schick pop up, perhaps I'll defer to him. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think probably one of the quick comparators would be where we get have discussions around possible paving in the in the past is Locom Lake. Is another site that is gravel and and has experiences all year round use. I have to get a list for the full sites to name off all thirteen. You did name off a few with the Ball Diamonds, both the Sturgeon Ball Diamonds, the Meadowview Ball Diamonds, Botanica Sites, BMX Park and whatnot as well. So we have a few, and and I can take that as an information request to do a a full list of all all the sites as comparators. If if that's necessary, too.
I I think if I could just jump on and do some notes here, Danielle has also offered Locom Lake Park is is probably one that's comparative in terms of traffic. Certainly, and real parking lot, Alexic Field seasonally, certainly.
So so just a couple of follow-on questions in on Locom Lake Park. It's not supported by volunteers, right? There's, that's purely city-run facility. There's no volunteer hours that you know, thirty years worth of history of volunteers participating in that park?
That's correct, Councilor.
And it's that Locom Lake Park is now in the ten-year capital plan, right? It was it was in, when I looked at our, at the SCOW meeting, it's it's now added in there.
That's be, as a result of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget deliberations, that's correct. Locom Lake has a charter that's been developed.
For for paving, okay, so.
Paving, correct.
So when I looked at that, and I appreciate just trying to understand the numbers. It in in that document back at SCOW, it it said the number was significantly less than what is being used here in our comparator chart. So I'm trying to understand which which of the numbers is is correct. Says the the cost for Locom Lake Park in our backgrounder today says two point one four nine million. But in the SCOW document for putting it in the ten-year charter, it actually said one point six million. And and if we were to use a sixty one percent comparator in size, starting from two different baseline numbers, we either get one point three million or something that's less than a million dollars. But I I just try and understand what is the right number that we would use there.
I I believe there's likely some additional in that in the cost variance based on the contingency volume.
Oh, okay. Okay, fair, fair enough.
And and just for, like, as work progressed, a better defined scope and design would result in stronger, accurate cost estimates for both Locom and and any other site for that matter.
It it's it's a lousy question to ask, I admit, because with the cost going up the way they are on everything, I'm almost nervous to ask a question about increasing costs that that go up over time. But I but I did want to understand why there was a difference between something that was shown a couple of weeks ago in SCOW to to versus today. The the other, the other thing is that we typically say that parking lots would be paved when there were other large associated capital activity. And I don't think there's anything planned, or or maybe there is, that didn't show up on the ten-year plan for Locom Lake. So what I'm trying to say that there is a comparator that we don't have to be driven by another big capital initiative to say that we could pave the Botanic Park as a standalone item, and we would want to do it to city standards, not like long-term city standards. Is there any other drivers that I'm missing that we would normally say would be associated to prompt paving of a parking lot?
Certainly, Mr. Schick can can jump in, but in terms of drivers, as you noted from another capital expenditure, that would be that. No, there's nothing on that that's a plan right now.
There's no no space on on the Botanic Park left to do anything major capital. I don't think they're building their new garage at the city's request so they can get rid of a C can that doesn't meet city requirements, right? So after that, there's not much left to do there. Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so that's great. And I guess the last uh, no, that's all my questions for administration. Thank you.
All right, Council Hughes.
So I I don't know if this is a couple of questions. First one, I'm going to try to say a whole sentence in the end, and one thing to have it end with a period, so it actually makes sense. Are there any other facilities that we're leasing out that we've currently paved the parking lots for? Like, if this type of standard, because I'm trying to think of other places, and I'm not thinking of them, the Curling Ring. But that's just a giant public parking lot, like that's like that night since God was a boy. And it's also for the Lions Park. Liberton Hill. Okay, but Liberton Hill really still is a city completely city park.
That's correct, Councilor.
So do we have any that are leased out that we've also paved?
I'll certainly ask Miss Podleme or Mr. Schick or Miss George to chime in, but no, I don't believe we do.
Not that I can recollect either. I'm just tracking my brain to see if I can think of any, but I can't off the top of my head.
Okay. The other question, I guess, I don't know who to ask this to, is just I understand the idea of having, you want to have accessibility for people who are like wheelchair or have disability. But has there been a thought about just paving the stalls for handicap, like giving six stalls and just paving the six stalls for handicap and then leaving the rest as gravel? Has there been ever? Do we know of any discussion of that ever? Would that be, that would be possible to do, right? We would just section off a section and say that's handicapped in that. Because I'm thinking like there's campsites and the handicap ones are all paved and everyone else has got gravel and good luck to you, right? Could we also do that for this type of situation?
I would ask Mr. Schick perhaps to answer that.
Yeah, out of fairness, absolutely, partial scope, right upfront, no, there hasn't been any consideration to date. It's it's usually been upon request to look at the site holistically, to deliver kind of the intent or based on the request, the motion. So it's been holistic of the entire parking lot area. But absolutely, if if that was a consideration and desire and acknowledgement was made for that level of scope and investment opportunity, then administration could investigate that.
Yeah, I'm also just wondering if, like, they could apply for capital grant through that and to to get that to happen, and we could support it that way as well. One way or another, that would help address some of that issue. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Council Broadhead, you're good? Okay. All right, I see no more questions. So Council Kilik, I accept your motion. I'll let you start into opening comments.
But thank you, Madam Mayor. This one is, you know, we we've got a huge amount of volunteers put in hundreds of thousands of hours to make it a park that is accessible for all of St. Albert. As well as a tourism site, a destination for all kinds of things, whether it be weddings or anniversaries or access to people with wheelchairs, access to you know, moms and with their their kids in wagons, schools, bring their buses in to the parking lot. Seniors homes, bring their buses of seniors in as well, and and seniors buses don't park in the the wheelchair accessible, if you would, potential site. They they actually kind of do a loop around and they park over on the far side, and yet, so people can get on and off a bus and then across the the expanse of the the parking lot. It seems to me that trying to do a little bit of a piecemeal paving would not really be a solution that this park is so beautiful, it's so beautifully built out. They've spent countless hours fundraising for th- this park is so beautiful, it's so beautifully built out. Uh, they've spent countless hours fundraising for um, a pathway that that we as council were proud to go and support at the ribbon cutting. And, uh, they they've worked hard with the city, um, which, by the way, they, when I met with them, they did mention that they were getting great support from their uh, community liaison liaison person, person. So I I do want to do a little bit of a shout out there, uh, to help them with amending their their leasehold agreement and their space so that they could pave the the park, their their pathway and join it up to the Red Willow park so that there wasn't this little muddy chunk between their, the the Botanic Park garden path and and the Red Willow, uh, paved pathway along the the river. So they've they've gone out of their way over the years, uh, to to make this a beautiful asset for the city. Um, and and for city residents, and this is a great opportunity, I think, to to finish it, uh, for uh, the benefit of everybody that uses it. And it, I know we have it in our our strategic plan that it, you know, one of our priorities is accessibility. And so when I see this, um, mentioned even in, as I said, in both our strategic plan and our, uh, operating plan, uh, that accessibility is a key item. This to me was one example where, um, it it absolutely made sense to to pave this parking lot. The other one is that it paving it in the wintertime would allow them to host, uh, events in their their community, uh, building. Uh, so this might give them some more additional, uh, revenue, yeah, as well to make them less uh, dependent on on funding from the city. The other one is I just love the fact that we have an example where where we have agreed to put into our capital plan the paving of La Combe uh, Lake Dog Park, or I guess it's more than a dog park, it's a lake, uh, park. And, uh, again, for all the right reasons, we're we're going to pave that where we have that in the plan to pave um, for accessibility and finishing it off. And the last thing to be done, doing it to city standards, et cetera, et cetera. So it it just seemed to me that all of these reasons, um, m- made absolute sense to have this added to our ten year, uh, capital planning, uh, pro- process and and hopefully for early earlier prioritization, uh, rather than later. The the other reason I think it should be looked at as a city plan is it does require proper curbing, proper stormwater drainage, uh, you know, proper line marking, uh, all of those things that would actually finish it and and make it a, you know, finish a beautiful asset for the city and make it up to city standards. Uh, I would hate to see them just go through, you know, fundraising and then pave a little piece here and a little piece there and uh, you know, do it piecemeal. I think that um, doesn't sound like the right approach. So I I'm hopeful that, um, the rest of council sees the benefits of this and sees that it aligns with other projects that we have. Uh, the other, the other one is my understanding this was on the ten year capital plan. A few years back, I I had heard that it was in two thousand nineteen that it was taken off. I actually couldn't find that. Um, I think that kind of went to Counselor Bemanski's question whether this had ever been looked at before. Um, I I couldn't find reference to that being on the plan and then taken off, but, uh, maybe maybe there's some additional history there that, um, that I I just couldn't find. But anyway, uh, the the other reason when I heard that this was was not supported was we didn't have uh, public support for it. And I think now we've, um, certainly engaged with the Botanic Park, uh, volunteers, we've received a number of letters that have been shared with council, um, all requesting paving the parks. We've got lots of good public input now. And, uh, they all speak to different reasons, whether it's accessibility, use, safety, um, beautification, finishing the park off, all of those kind of things that were listed in the letters from the public. So um, I'm, I hope that, uh, this is, this is supported and added to our ten year capital plan.
Anyone else have any comments on debate? I can't see Council Broadhead. See, no more comments. I will just call for the vote. Voting's closed and that motion passes with Mayor Heron and Council Broadhead opposed. All right, how are we doing for time? Do you guys need a break? All I have given you so far is two minutes. So I know you probably, you and I need to always run to the bathroom. So it is a three fifteen. Why don't we make it three twenty five, ten minutes? Twenty five, twenty seven budget plan and, oh, sorry, business plan and budget, along with the funding recommendations guided by the capital prioritization matrix. All right, anything to add to that?
I think we've gone through this and we've done all our debate for any changes and let's just move forward and next step into the budget.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. It passes unanimously. Uh, the next, uh, nine point two is on consent, which was a recommendation from the Community Service Advisory Committee on two thousand and twenty four community capital grant, uh, program allocation. So the motion awarded the St. Albert Tokia, is that right? Toka? Judo Society, um, is it Tokyo? To what? Okay, sorry, thirty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, or sorry, twenty eight thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars for facility upgrades. And the Friends of Lois E. Whole School Enhancement Society was awarded, uh, thirty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for playground expansion for a total out of that grant program of fifty nine thousand nine hundred and forty five. Okay. Alberta Municipalities Resolutions, Monte, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. I'm Monte Kell, Government Relations Advisor. And before you fear consideration and approval, our potential resolutions to sponsor for Alberta municipalities upcoming twenty twenty four convention in Red Deer this coming September. Administration has drafted three separate resolutions that speak to operational and strategic issues that have been highlighted as areas where provincial policy and legislative changes can improve the city's ability to provide effective and efficient services to residents. First resolution, preventative psychological services support for municipal first responders. Request that the province provide financial support for municipalities to fund the provision of preventative psychological services to municipal first responders to increase their resiliency in the line of duty and reduce the operational costs of workers' compensation board premiums and staff overtime to cover extended leaves of absences to treat psychological injuries. The second resolution, provincial support for watershed management. Requests that the province direct resources to bolster the application of provincial legislation that regulate watersheds so that municipalities have more resources and engagement opportunities to better manage and preserve their watersheds. The third resolution, education property tax reform. Requests that the province action, the min- the Ministry of Municipal Affairs mandate letter request that the education property tax be reviewed to assist municipalities with retaining more funding for local priorities. Administration has consulted with key stakeholders and administrative subject matter experts on the content of these resolutions and has also shared them with Alberta municipalities for feedback. Recent feedback provided by Alberta municipalities has suggested minor changes to the education property tax resolution to improve flexibility. Administration will implement this change as it will not alter the intent of the resolution and council's associated motion to endorse the resolution today. Recent feedback provided by Alberta municipalities has suggested minor changes to the education property tax resolution to improve flexibility. Administration will implement this change as it will not alter the intent of the resolution and council's associated motion to endorse the resolution today. Updated versions of each resolution will be provided to council once seconding municipalities have been confirmed. Should council endorse these resolutions and should the resolutions be adopted at the upcoming Alberta municipalities convention, the issues will form part of Alberta municipalities advocacy efforts and associated engagement with the government of Alberta. Council has also requested to appoint a resolution champion from among council for each of these resolutions. The champion will speak to their respective resolution on the floor at convention and will assist in coordination of finding a municipality to second their resolution. Should council desire that administration draft a new resolution to address any emergent issues of provincial significance, a motion can be moved to direct administration to draft a new resolution. So that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. I'm going to start if you don't mind. The education property tax one you mentioned, you spoke to probably Darren. Because I, of course, talked to Dan. I think they probably mentioned that he called me. Do you want to just kind of say where we're going to change things?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we are going to change the it is therefore resolved clause. It's pretty much just changing the very last sentence. So it currently reads with that Alberta municipalities advocate to the government of Alberta to action the Minister of Municipal Affairs mandate letter from the premier to review the provincial education tax to assist municipalities with retaining more funding for local priorities with the outcome being that municipalities receive provincial funding for municipal infrastructure equal to or greater than what they are individually requisitioned in provincial education property tax. So the main change is to change that individually requisitioned to collectively requisitioned and to remove the clause that comes after that, which currently reads as part of this advocacy effort, Alberta municipalities aims to ensure that any provincial policy changes to the above do not unintentionally lead to less provincial funding for municipalities. So that clause will be removed because the the change from individually to collectively is meant to address that concern.
Okay, all right. Who's our champion on this one again? I can't remember. So so council, the the concern was, of course, we collect, and I'm just throwing out rough numbers, thirty million dollars in education property taxes. Twenty, what, twenty five, thirty five? And and we receive back from the provincial government somewhere between seven and eight million dollars in LGFF, right? But on some of the smaller communities, they actually receive more in grant money than they collect in education proper taxes. So this could fail on the floor if we didn't make that change. So I think Wes, when you speak to this is, I think what the real intention of this, and this is just my opinion, you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, is this really about getting the Minister MacGyver to action when he was asked to do by the premier? I don't care how it rolls out in the end. That's his job to figure out what this looks like, but just get him to do something essentially. Right? So Wes, we can work on on some speaking notes. That's that's the pressure. We'll just make sure that none of the small communities feel like they're going to lose anything in the process. Uh, I'll come back to myself. Sorry, Council Broadhead, go ahead.
I agree wholeheartedly. I'm sure we can come up with appropriate wordage.
Okay, Council Brumansky.
Thank you, through the mayor to administration. I have a question with regard to the recommended motion number one, the preventative psychological services for support. Is that not provided through the employee assistance programs now? And and where would where are you asking for funds to be directed to which group?
So right now, there there is no active funding for preventative psychological services. So in the resolution, one of the examples that we give is the before operational stress program. There there is no opportunities right now to access provincial funding to provide that service to first responders. The the intent of this motion is to provide a grant so that municipalities are not left with funding these programs through their own financial means.
Okay, so the funding would be to the city to provide the program itself then, or?
Correct, through a grant or a similar financial mechanism.
Okay, and how are the employee assistance programs connected to what the city would be doing then?
Actually, Council Brumansky, I might ask for Ryan Stovall and Everett Cook to chime in on this, but I think like this, this goes above and beyond sort of existing pieces that that are in place today. But Mr. Stovall, Mr. Cook can probably provide more context.
I'm not sure if Everett's jumped in, but there's a few different lines. There was definitely a catalyst that I believe Mr. Dooley spoke to, but we were trying to capture all potential things that the city has in its operation to to make that motion. So I'm not sure much more I can elaborate further, but there we were trying not to exclude any one group, I guess, is how the this came to be.
Hey, you're good. Guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I'm seeing no more questions, and I just wanted to ask about the potential of the of another resolution and timelines and how we would get that done. But after Bill twenty came out and there was the elimination of electronic voting machines, I thought that would be opportunity for us to actually have a conversation at the on the resolution floor at convention about trying to get the provincial government to reverse that decision. Both federal and provincial governments use electronic voting machines. Why can't municipal? So I I don't know how have you guys given that some thought? And if we can get it done, I mean, I think our deadline is May thirty first, right?
Correct, Madam Mayor. We have spoken with Alberta municipalities about any potential emergent resolutions. They suggested that we would have the time to draft a resolution and submit it before that deadline.
Okay, all right. So do you need a motion from council to ask you to do that?
Correct.
Okay, do we have that ready? Oh, look at you guys.
Yes, we have one ready.
Okay, so I could relinquish the chair or if somebody else wants to read that part of it, but let's let's do what's in front of us. Normally, when there's really long wordy ones, I get Natalie to read them because she's a fast reader, but who's the fastest reader here? Okay, Council Kaila, go.
Okay. Oh, sorry. So the recommended motions are that council endorses the resolution entitled preventative psychological services support for municipal first responders provided as attachment one to the May seventh, two thousand and twenty four agenda report titled twenty twenty four Alberta municipality resolutions and refer it to the two thousand and twenty four Alberta municipalities convention for consideration. Two, that council appoint councillor Mackay as a resolution champion for the preventative psychological support for municipal first responders, resolution for the two thousand and twenty four Alberta municipalities convention. Three, that council endorses the resolution entitled provincial support for watershed management provided as attachment two to the May seventh, two thousand and twenty four agenda report titled twenty twenty four Alberta municipality resolutions and refer it to the two thousand and twenty four Alberta municipalities convention for consideration. Four, that council appoint that councillor point councillor Mackay as a resolution champion for the provincial support for watershed management resolution for the two thousand and twenty four Alberta municipalities convention. Number five, that council endorses the resolution entitled education property tax reform provided as attachment three to the May seventh, two thousand and twenty four agenda report titled twenty twenty four Alberta municipality resolutions and for it and refer it to the two thousand and twenty four Alberta municipalities convention for consideration. And five or six, that council appoint councillor Broadhead as a resolution champion for the education property tax reform resolution for the two thousand and twenty four Alberta municipalities convention.
Thank you, Council Kaila. Anything to add?
Just with the amendments as proposed to the education tax, I think we'll have very good success of these resolutions at the convention and thank the various councillors for supporting them on on the convention floor.
Thank you. Counselor Mackay comments?
Yeah, I'm just going to add in relation to the question offered by Council Brumansky. One of the key things for me as a former first responder, we have a lot of programs like you've identified employee assistance to deal with post event. This talks about preventative and being involved in trying to trying to build that up. We're even starting to see it now in a lot of the wildfire volunteer firefighters that are dealing with a lot of critical stress as it related to the response to the wildfires. But I I I'm looking forward to more of the background or a little bit more of the information as to what some of those programming, what some of those access to dollars will be because as I said, as a former first responder, one of the things we've started to see are those extended medical absences that are dealing with psychological injuries. And there was just kind of this in my lifetime was more like, you know, suck it up. Be there, get, you know, deal with it. But I there was never really a strong preventative kind of programming that gave you the tools necessary to potentially deal with some of the trauma that first responders have to deal with. So I look forward to the background or I look forward to some of the maybe potential avenues that we can explore with the province that is going to address some of the the issues that we have around psychological supports for first responders.
Anything to close, Council Kaila?
These are great resolutions. I'd like to recognize the tremendous amount of work behind the scenes done by the administration. It was a very quick, short, brief presentation, probably represented hundreds of hours of background work to draft them up, work with the other municipalities to get buy-in, get tweaks, get comments back, work with Alberta municipalities to get their feedback as well. It it looks so clean and simple when it comes to council for a vote, but it certainly needs recognition of the tremendous amount of hours that are that go into making these these happen. The other thing I think that's important to say is that these resolutions are all about finding ways to work collaboratively and in partnership with our provincial government. And that too is is absolutely critical that we find ways to work with that that big partner. As often, these are provide fundings not and and these resolutions are not just for St. Albert, they're for all municipalities in the province. And so again, we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that that although although they're being approved here today at council, they represent all municipalities across the province and the bigger picture of working with our provincial government. So these are great. And again, thank you for administration for all the all the work.
All right, I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. That's carried unanimously. Do you want to maybe just throw into the chat what you guys have concocted? Or not the chat, sorry. Well, both the chat and then Organicus.
So we took some liberties. We assumed that Mayor Heron would be the champion for this.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
And yes, so you'll have to relinquish your chair if you're going to make the motion or okay.
Ken will make it for me. Thanks, Council Mackay. What does it say? Oh, there it is.
That council authorized city administration to prepare to submit a resolution for the Alberta municipalities two thousand and twenty four convention on behalf of city council directing Alberta municipalities to advocate to the government of Alberta to allow municipal governments to use automated voting equipment such as electronic tabulators to count votes in a local election. That council appoint Mayor Heron as a resolution champion for council's two thousand and twenty four emergent Alberta municipalities resolution regarding automated voting equipment. Some of the smaller communities still hand vote, but just make it enabling instead of restrictive, if that's okay.
Okay, except is that okay with you?
Yeah, that that makes perfect sense based on the fact that you're right, a smaller municipality that currently doesn't actually use that would probably agree with that.
All right. And so does this have to come back to council? I would assume no, right?
Yeah, so the way it's been drafted, again, if council is comfortable with this approach and assuming this this passes, we'd work with Mayor Heron as a resolution champion to confirm kind of final wording before we submit it to Alberta municipalities. But the resolution document itself would not come back to council for approval prior to the submission for us to sort of hit that July deadline.
Will that also include?
But but we'll, of course, share that, share with with council.
Madam Mayor, I'm assuming that'll also include an extensive kind of background or with all the wherances that will provide the kind of because there's associated costs, I'm assuming in relation to this, that we don't actually have a hand on it.
A bit early. And and quite honestly, council, this might be null and void if through consultations they take this out of Bill twenty. There there's talk already of that. So but I just wanted to get on on the record. So if I see no more comments, no one registered to speak, I'll call for the vote.
Did you want to debate?
As I was looking for comments and there was none, sorry.
Sorry, I got, sorry, I missed that. I'm not going to be supporting this. It's not because I don't think that you could do a great job, Mayor Heron. And I'm it may pass anyway, but I personally agree that it's fine if we actually had to do manual voting. I understand the convenience of this, but there's also other limitations that come with having these machines. And I understand why the provincial government decided to do what they did, and I'm perfectly comfortable with at least trying one election to see how it goes with that. And the idea of having instantaneous results, our results came in later than almost everyone's every single election. So it doesn't necessarily make anything convenient or more quicker, but it does have issues with disafforded confidence in many areas and people can say that that's unreasonable, but it's if we don't have it there, there's nothing to challenge. That's it. Thank you.
Council Brumansky.
My comments would echo councillor Hughes. There's a reason the province has brought it forward, and we don't really even know what that reason is. And plus, it's a little bit premature when the bill hasn't passed yet. He put this through at Alberta municipality. So I'd kind of like to hear details before before advocating for something that's not a hundred percent explained to us or have an understanding of. That's it.
Okay, thank you. If you watch the press conference, Minister MacGyver said some people, which is not a lot. That's not a majority. I see the potential of hand counting being much more flawed and opening ourselves up as our legal counsel has said to recounts and judicial reviews. I'd be fine with electronic voting and then recount by hand if you really didn't trust it. But like, you know, within certain percentages, et cetera. But right now I'm more concerned with the cost of this. And yes, some of our elections have gotten back late that night. This would be late next week to count all these votes. So I think this is a an option that we should continue to allow municipalities to explore if they want. Anything to close, Council Mackay?
No, I think you've your comments are.
Call for the vote. Oh, sorry, voting's closed. I thought motion passes by a majority with Council Brumansky and Hughes opposed. All right, ten point two is transit bus funding. Do we need to do a shift of people or?
No, we've got them online.
Okay, so we have no presentation from this because it was on consent. So Council Brumansky, I'll just go to you for your questions.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions for the public and for myself. Reading this over a few times, it's the background is clear as mud to me. But anyhow, could you just explain the planned original like for two thousand and twenty four, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six amount of buses and clarify also if the the build of a two thousand and twenty five bus would arrive arrive in two thousand and twenty six, you know, sort of like cars are built to the year ahead kind of thing? Could you just clarify the number of buses per year and what two thousand and twenty six will actually dictate to us for purchases of buses and how it will be done?
Yeah, thank you, council. I'll turn that over to Tim Saunders, Director of Public Operations.
Yeah, thank you, council. I'll turn that over to Tim Saunders, Director of Public Operations.
Hey, thank you. Uh, three-year worship to Councilor Manceki. Um, I am just trying to share my screen. Um, you know, let me know if you see this. This is an outline of the three-year procurement. Um, a three-year funding approval, should I say. Uh, so this includes the twenty twenty-four funding approval, which was a growth charter for the two new buses for serving Riverside and Jensen Lakes. The next two years of funding approval was a two-year advance approval of our RMR budget TRAN zero zero one for eight buses to be purchased, replacing eight buses in twenty twenty-five and nine buses in twenty twenty-six, one for one. The timing of this procurement, if the funding increase is, is permitted to go, the growth buses will be received in early twenty twenty-five, as will the twenty twenty-five buses within calendar year twenty twenty-five. And the twenty twenty-six buses will not be received nor paid for until twenty twenty-six calendar year.
Okay, so the nine buses, um when would you plan on ordering those if they're not even in the discussion anymore?
As we went through the procurement process and based on the, the market conditions, it was determined only to obtain pricing for the twenty twenty-five eight buses. Uh manufacturers responded that there would not be any clarity and we would ultimately have a large amount of risk priced into prices that they submitted now. We have tailored the contract to have an opportunity to obtain prices at the end of twenty twenty-five. But we also reserve the right that we can re-tender the twenty twenty-six buses for a new procurement round.
Okay, and if you don't purchase from the same company, how many companies are there to choose from? Like, I know buses are premium and not so easy to get at this particular time.
There, there has been a couple that submitted pricing this go around. Um, and it would presume that it would be the same, same group uh at the end of twenty twenty-five for twenty twenty-six.
Okay, and then, so you aren't changing the number of buses on twenty twenty-five at all? You'll just leave it constant?
That's, that's our intention. We, because we have obtained firm pricing and that was how the procurement went. If we change the volume or the quantity of buses that was being requested, we would have to go back to all proponents to obtain um alternate pricing, which may have an impact on the costs. Uh, you know, there could be potential loss of economies of scale. So for us to have the most expeditious appro- approach for the procurement would be to maintain the, these numbers, which is actually our life cycle planning at the moment.
Okay, and then the last question, why is the largest amount in the unknown? Like, why, why push off nine to twenty twenty-six?
That was just a function of our life cycling of the buses. Currently, in twenty twenty-four, we have buses. We have three buses that are nineteen years old. And at the end of twenty twenty-six, that's gonna keep us on to more of a flat line of the eighteen-year life cycle timing.
Okay, that is all my questions. Thank you.
Councilor Hughes.
You've made me think of a quick question. At the end, when we sell, uh the ones replacing, we can sell them, right? Like, we're actually selling our used buses, right? At the end of the day?
That is correct. Through, through the chair to uh Councilor Hughes, that's correct.
Sorry, I missed what you said at the very end.
Then that, sorry, through the chair to Councilor Hughes, that is correct. We will auction off buses at the end of their service life.
So I don't know if you know this or not, but if the price of the new ones is going up, or the price of the used ones also going up. Do you know? Or is it just been kind of like, are we just guestimating the same as before for that?
So, no, I actually, we have uh our Transit Fleet Manager, Tom Kumka, online with us. He has most recently um auctioned some of the handy buses that are most recent and could add a little bit more clarity as to how that pricing was received versus previous years. Tom?
Yeah, through the chair, uh councillor, uh we just uh auctioned off uh four pair transit buses. And, and because of the uh, they were a shorter life cycle span and uh we were able to get uh thirteen thousand seven fifty for each bus. So uh we, we hadn't seen that before. Uh, there is a demand for that. Uh, the issue is, it's comparative to conventional transit. Is our buses now are eighteen years old and going on nineteen and twenty by the time we're gonna be selling them or taking them to auction. We haven't taken buses to auctions since twenty twenty, so we don't have an indication of what exactly that is gonna involve. But um in the past and history has shown is there's not a large amount of, of money to be had, whether we take it to auction, take them to auction or um take them to, like, a lot of the other transits will take them to uh, get, take them to scrap and get so many cents a pound for them, so. Um, the conventional transit buses are different from the pair transit side, I think.
Okay, and then the money we get, I'm assuming it just goes back into the life cycle reserve, is that?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right, I see no more questions. Councilor Manceki, did you want to make the motion?
Thank you. That the budget for municipal growth capital charter tran zero zero four transit growth buses project four two four three five one be increased by two, two hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred for a total budget of one million eight hundred and thirty-three five zero zero to be funded from capital reserve. And number two, that the budget for municipal repair maintenance RMR capital charter tran zero zero one transit bus life cycle replacement for twenty twenty-five be increased by one million two hundred and sixty-five two fifty for a total budget of ten million five one five nine five zero to be funded from the life, transit life cycle reserve with goods and or services not to be received until after January one twenty twenty-five.
All right, I'll accept that. Any comments on that?
Just, we need buses. We don't have much choice, but I did want clarity for the public, so that was it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Broadhead, go ahead. He's having a hard time unmuting every. There we go.
Thank you. I, it's, it's interesting. Thank actually uh Councilor Manceki for pulling this off consent to give me a chance to speak to this. Uh, I must admit that the last three days, one of the biggest topics uh in the National Transit Conference was around bus procurement, bus uh what's changing within the industry. And uh the fact that our administration is being able to submit these and get some sort of recognition and some sort of solid dates in terms of their uh delivery of this new rolling stock. Uh, many in our uh country aren't having that sort of success. We only have two bus manufacturers in Canada one right now, and one is gonna go to straight uh uh electric without a diesel option uh in the near future. And in twenty twenty-seven, the EPA uh uh regulations in the United States, which drives the bus manufacturing here in Canada as well. Changes in the, the uh, the uh Arctic bus won't be able to have the uh the engine that it currently has because Cummins will quit making it. So I asked, I says, are we gonna be able to buy clean diesels after twenty twenty-seven? And uh the one manufacturer that it's actually going to uh still build them wouldn't commit to it unless they had large orders of, large number of orders for it, simply because of the engineering uh uh rig or required to fit the new uh engine into a, a, a bus. Everybody wants to go to a zero emission vehicle, uh whether that be electric or whether that be uh hydrogen. Problem is, is that uh there is a cost increase uh for both electric and hydrogen. So it's, it's an interesting dilemma uh for municipalities like us. Uh, and even greater dilemma for larger uh uh fleets where they have a thousand buses in their order and a hundred at a time. But I guess it's all scale. Uh, it costs money here, it costs money there, and uh we'll just have to uh you know, ride the wave as it goes. So anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Broadhead, for the insight. I see no one else wanting to speak. Anything to close, Councilor Manceki?
Uh, nothing to close.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. And now we're on to the long-awaited topic of provision of EMS services. So you have a presentation, Everett?
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Yes, we do. I have, it's okay. I'll just share my screen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Fantastic. Thank you. Perfect, there we go. So, thank you. All right, well, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you again this afternoon. Uh, I would just like to take a quick moment before we begin to introduce to Assistant Chief of Operations Stephen Underhay. Uh, Stephen joined us from the City of Red Deer Fire Services and Assistant Chief Underhey, he's been with the City of St. Albert Fire Service for nearly two years. And in addition to his regular duties, he has participated in this entire negotiation process with Alberta Health Services and Alberta Health, putting in a significant amount of time during the entire course. He's with me today to assist in providing the answers or bringing clarity to any questions that you may have. As council is aware, the City of St. Albert has been in the business of delivering pre-hospital care for a very long time. Since two thousand and nine, this care has been under contract in the direction of Alberta Health Services. The benefits of the city's emergency medical service or pre-hospital care program is centered on providing St. Albert residents the best possible care that any resident would want. Not only do our eighty-plus practitioners provide dedicated services while working a shift on a St. Albert ambulance, but also through our medical first resp- first response program. The MFR program is in place throughout the province to complement, complement, but not replace ambulatory care. In two thousand and twenty-three, the St. Albert Fire Service responded to an estimated two thousand and two hundred medical first response calls within our community. I know that council takes pride in the fact that our St. Albert paramedics are among the finest the industry has to offer. As examples, in the fall of twenty twenty-three, firefighter Steve Murdock and firefighter Ryan Lawrence received recognition from their peers, receiving an award for excellence in resuscitation. Further, I am very pleased to say that within the past two years, firefighter Steph Federak has facilitated the birth of no less than three babies in the field. Uh, in the field, while other St. Albert paramedics have successfully responded to the urgent needs of city employees from other departments. Although these are only a few examples of their outstanding work, of the outstanding work done by our practitioners, their excellence must be recognized. Madam Mayor, I share the aforementioned details with council as it is important to connect them, our staff, with the two top priorities that administration has maintained throughout the entire negotiation process. The well-being of St. Albert staff and the, and ensuring that our ambulances and our crews remain in St. Albert as much as possible to ensure ensure local service delivery is maintained for our residents. As you will see in the slide provided, entering into a long-term agreement and an increased funding formula were also identified as priorities. Sorry, apologize. Uh, were also identified as priorities. As a long-term agreement or contract provides St. Albert both stability and the confidence that we will remain delivering these services for years to come, while an increased level of compensation will assist in reducing the financial impact of delivering these services. With respect to the proposed contract, it is my understanding that the City of St. Albert is the last integrated service to consider this agreement. This has come after years of negotiations and uh, and another year of one-on-one discussions with Alberta Health Services, which I include, or pardon me, which include what I will call a reboot of the negotiations, which saw the inclusion of an Alberta Health Services representative at the table. St. Albert continued our contract negotiations up until just a few weeks ago. As you'll see on the slide provided, the highlights of the proposed agreement include a two-point-five-year agreement, which will take us through September of twenty twenty-six. I must note that although there was a potential for a two-point-five-year extension, that there is no guarantee. The City of St. Albert will receive an increase in funding, which I, which will be discussed on the following slide. However, I do want to point out that the rate changes will be reflecting or will be reflective as of April first, twenty twenty-three. Through this contract, Alberta Health Services will create a governance committee with all integrated services with the purpose of discussing matters related to response, staff well-being, and service delivery. This is where any priorities that we brought forward that were not addressed will be discussed, I believe quarterly, with hope to bring or find resolve. And finally, and we, the inclusion of language relating to Alberta Health Services having the first right of refusal to purchase St. Albert resources has been updated to ensure that St. Albert, should in the future, we no longer participate in delivering pre-hospital care, will receive fair market value for our assets, should Alberta Health Services wish to procure these resources. As you'll see in the table provided, administration has prepared a snapshot of the financials related to our current agreement compared to the proposed agreement. Couple points I wish to highlight include the approximate six hundred thousand increase in annual funding. And the effort, or pardon me, and in efforts to reflect actual costs, administration has used the twenty twenty-four operating costs for both agreements as the amount, as the amount is reflective of the, of the, that, excuse me, of the deep dive that was recently conducted into our actual operating costs. It is important to note that our operating costs, though, are a moving target. I say they're a moving target as the impacts of the procurement of new ambulances and the changes to staffing costs have yet to be added into the formula and when known are certain to increase these operating costs. Focusing specifically on the benefits of the proposed contract, the greatest advantage is the increased opportunity that our residents retain of receiving the care from our firefighters, our service. Further to this, entering into this agreement will allow St. Albert to maintain situational awareness of pre-hospital care being delivered to our residents, while we will also be in a position to maintain our current staffing levels as well as our operating model. Should it be decided that the City of St. Albert will no longer participate in the delivery of pre-hospital care, it will result in impacts. Examples include that it will be unclear of how HS will replace the services currently provided by the City of St. Albert. And the City of St. Albert will lose it, will lose all situational awareness with respect to pre-hospital care in, in our city as we will no longer have a seat at the table. We may also experience impacts to our current staffing levels as we are currently overhired in preparation for fire hall four. And it should be pointed out that the existing, that existing uh pardon me, exiting this contract will result in a reduction of costs to the city as all costs related to the, to future ambulance, ambulance services would be the responsibility of the province and not the City of St. Albert. Before you today, there are two recommend, or pardon me, are two motions with a recommendation from administration that the CAO will be authorized to execute an agreement between the City of St. Albert and Alberta Health Services for the continued provision of EMS ground ambulance services for a term of up to five years, including renewals on the terms and conditions acceptable to the CAO. I thank you very much and be happy to answer any questions that you do have.
All right, um I'll open it up for questions now and we all got an email from Marta talking about various reasons we might want to go in camera. And so uh, I, I will be looking to go in camera at one point, so, but we can do as much as we can. Now, if you want to, or um, so is there any questions of this at the time? You, you're in camera, okay. Uh, okay, I think I heard that everybody has questions, but there, we need to go in camera for them, so can we get the motion up? And Councilor Mackay, you okay to do that then? Yeah, go ahead.
That uh council move in camera to discuss a matter pursuant to section twenty-five, one C, three of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
All right, I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. That's unanimous. Um, we need to set up a breakout room, so Councilor Broadhead can join us in Council Lounge. Or Bill, do you want to just shut the doors? There's no one up there.
Yeah, well, it will lock. We, we can. Um, the only concern is
noise traveling outside.
Okay, let's go in the lounge. Okay.
I'll stand by your.
Okay, you guys did the test, did you?
Uh, waiting for a breakout room. I'm not sure if it's going to come or. Uh, Madam Mayor, I haven't got an invitation to a breakout room.
Sheena, can you reconvene in public?
I'm of the.
Yes. Are you good with going to public, Wes? I missed him. He's in. Okay, so it's unanimous without Natalie or Mike to go back in public. Okay. Are we ready? So Wes, you had a question about the the surplus or the excess revenue that is in this contract compared to the old one. Do you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, to administration. Can you just run through the financials in terms of the the $600,000 that we netted from this contract and what the intent of that $600,000 will be, the intended use of?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Broadhead. I'll just begin and then Everett will probably jump in. That is something because we're finalizing the contract, we weren't able to adjust and capture that in the budget adjustment. So as it stands, that would be something that would probably potentially contribute to a surplus, but that is something that we're in discussion and I'll probably pass on to Everett that we would have an administration discussion on addressing some of the costs that weren't captured. I'll pass it over to Cap. Everett?
Thank you very much to Counselor Broadhead through the chair. Just to touch on your question, one of the options too that administration would like to look at in the future with this surplus is the possibility to fund or support some programs that may be needed for our first responders around health and wellness and the betterment of our staff, of course. And that is something we would anticipate coming back to council at a future date. But again, that would be after administration has had a really good look at the funding, what's available for us and what the best course of utilizing some of that funds may be.
Okay, fair enough. You'll let us know though, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I had one quick question. It doesn't really change my vote, but under the proposed contract, there was some bullet points and one of them was the creation of a governance committee to meet and discuss matters related to response, resourcing and service delivery. So I'm just wondering what that governance committee looks like, who sits on it? How big is it? Is it just the I-7 or is it just St. Albert and AHS? What's going on there?
Excellent question, Madam Mayor. So the governance committee is brand new. It was something brought forward and through the recent negotiations brought forward by Alberta Health Services as indicated to address any concerns that may arise or any matters that we wanted to address in this current contract that may not have been. I understand that the governance committee is to be inclusive of all the I-7 plus a number of high-ranking individuals from Alberta Health Services, including their operations chiefs and folks of that nature that will be able to help bring resolve or a response anyways to any of the questions or matters that we bring forward.
Okay, so two and a half years from now, if we continue this model, this governance committee will probably have helped form the next contract essentially.
That is, as I understand it, the intent. Yes.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. All right, let's make a motion because I see no more questions. Counselor Broadhead, you want to make this one?
Sure. I'd love, yeah, all right. That the CAO be authorized to execute an agreement between the city of St. Albert and Alberta Health Services for the continued provision of EMS ground ambulance services for the term of up to five years, including renewals on terms and conditions acceptable to the CAO.
All right, do you have any opening comments on that?
Just Madam Mayor, that staff, the CEO has been working very hard with AHS to arrive at a contract for the provision of this service that we can live with, quite honestly, and want to commend our CEO and the support staff, Chief Cook, all the rest for for actually coming up with something that serves the needs of St. Albert, at least in the foreseeable future. And hopefully these sorts of negotiations will bear fruit for the long term.
Awesome. Anyone else on debate with this one? Sign on, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Okay, we have the tax rate bylaw next. And we have Stephen Bannerman. You're making a presentation for us, Stephen?
Did you get your votes to work?
Yeah, well, they're not working. I just have to block the sound.
Oh, it just, you can.
Mute. Sorry, Wes, we can hear you. As long as you're okay with us listening in. Okay, go ahead, Stephen.
Great, I'm just waiting for. Oh, there we go, sharing my screen here. So, good afternoon. My name is Stephen Bannerman and I'm the City Assessor and Senior Manager with Finance and Strategic Services. And I'm here to present the 2024 Property Tax Rate Bylaw. Similar to years prior, our focus will be on three separate sections. The first is a summary of the 2024 Tax Rate Requisition. St. Albert tax notices are broken into three main components. Let's begin with the municipal levy. The general municipal totals 132 million. This amount was determined in December through the annual budget process and amended by budget adjustments made on April 16th council meeting. The service union capital levy has been reduced to 2 million. Oh, I just went back, sorry folks. 2,018,000 and property owners will see a reduction in the amount they pay for that capital levy, and I'll discuss this in an upcoming slide. The second main component to the St. Albert property tax bills is the provincial or education requisition. As it is often referred, this requisition is not controlled by the city of St. Albert. The funds are collected for funding from K to 12 education for the province of Alberta. This requisition is paid by the property owners, whether you have a child in K to 12 or not. The total requisition was 38.2 million, and I believe that was a question early in the council meeting. So that would be our 2024 requisition. And finally, homeland housing is a public housing management body pursuant to the Alberta Social Housing Act, which has a mandate to serve low and moderate income seniors, individuals and families. A good example of a good example is the Northridge Lodge of the Chateau Mission here at the city of St. Albert. Designated industrial is a smaller levy in St. Albert and is primarily focused on oil and gas, which we don't have a lot of, and pipeline. The provincial assessor values these parcels through regulated assessment. There are two different tax rates in St. Albert. One is for residential and one is for non-residential properties. For 2024, the residential is 8.54 mils and the non-residential at 12.99 mils. The following does not include the service tax rate. There remains one smaller residential subclass category in St. Albert, the vacant lands tax rate. The purpose of this is to incentivize owners to improve their vacant residential lots after seven years. Each year, a handful of properties will drop off or be added to the list, and this year there remain six or 15 properties. The 2024 service capital tax rates, our annual debenture payment was formerly 3.28, so we've had that for the last 19 years. It commenced in 2005. 2024 is the 20th year of the levy. Two of the three remaining debentures are retired in 2024. But there is one last debenture that doesn't expire until 2025, and that's for approximately 369,000. Provincial legislation requires the city to levy and collect education taxes on behalf of the province of Alberta. The city of St. Albert does not set or control these requisition amounts. Variables such as growth, market value change and reported assessment road road totals at the municipal level factor into the requisition change results. It is important to note that the actual tax impacts are lessened by the effect of the new assessment growth occurring in 2023. So the total requisition changes included a 4.7% increase to overall. However, the residential increase was 5.7 and the non-residential 1.0. Average tax impacts will be later in the presentation. This summary provides a total of the tax rates expressed in mils, mil rate for both non-residential and residential properties. These are the tax rates that will be on your 2024 combined assessment notice. Because combined assessment and tax notes, excuse me. Now that we've had an opportunity to review the tax rates, we will provide a high-level summary of assessment changes. It is important to note that the mailing of St. Albert's combined assessment tax notices will occur on Wednesday, May 29th, 2024. Our legislated valuation date is July 1st, 2023. Changes to market that occurred subsequent to July 1st valuation date form part of next year's assessment. So recent changes such as the spring's real estate market will be reflected in next year's, the 2024's assessment year. St. Albert now has an excess of 32,000 assessable parcels. Taxable assessment went up from approximately 13.7 billion to 14.4 billion in the 23th assessment year. This is primarily due to the strength of the residential market in the spring and summer 2023. We have approximately 18.9,000 taxable single-family dwellings, followed by 6,700 condos and semi-detached units as well as 815 non-residential properties. Assessment growth, we hear about this one a lot. Assessment growth properties are the physical additions to the assessment base. On the left-hand column, the blue, and excuse if you can't see this, there's a lot of data on that, on that PowerPoint. On the left-hand in blue is residential growth. The green is the second column, the non-residential growth, and the final on the right is the orange, and that's overall growth for St. Albert. And so for St. Albert, a good year would be between 2 and 3% based on this historical averages. Overall growth is reported on the third bar in orange. Assessment years 22, 23 saw a decrease in the non-res growth numbers as compared to prior years. And with our industrial landfilling and additional focus on the non-residential tax base is required. Three large components to growth are the traditional single-family dwellings here in St. Albert. Three large components to growth are the traditional single-family dwellings here in St. Albert, multifamily and non-residential growth. Our chart demonstrates our top three, or this chart demonstrates our top three growth areas in St. Albert. Interestingly, in twenty twenty-three, the largest assessment growth was seen up at, seen in the walk-up apartment category. And that's obvious in the city when you go by Riverside or at, or newer neighborhoods like Jensen Lakes, followed by duplexes, or excuse me, the walk-up category grew by seventeen point nine percent. And consider that two to three percent is good growth. Followed by duplexes at four point five and row housing at three point three percent. Impressive. When the overall growth again is two percent. We will now proceed to market value change. The slide reflects the overall change to the residential and non-residential categories. The residential assessment base increased by two point two three percent, led by the duplexes and row housing mentioned previously. The non-residential properties continue to recover from COVID-nineteen impacts, particularly the hotel and motel inventories here in St. Albert. Additionally, gains were made in the industrial sector affecting warehousing within our industrial parks. The assessment base has not ch- has not changed in overall percentage from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, although it has redistributed in that category. So if you look at that base, the eighty-five to fourteen point eight assessment base hasn't really changed, but it's within those areas in the multifamily and the single family and commercial industrial, and we talked about those areas of growth. So it was just a very much a coincidence that the same numbers popped up this year, but it, it has changed and we have updated the slide from last year. Taxation impacts. The municipal ta- tax split is something council is able to control. Through tax rate by law and policy, based on the proposed changes, the two thousand twenty-four municipal tax split will lock at seventy-nine point two and twenty point eight percent. To retain a taxation split of seventy-nine point two and twenty point eight, councils required to set a differing tax rate between the residential and non-residential tax classes. Council policy states that the percentage of the city's municipal property tax requirement assigned to the non-residential assessment class shall not decrease over time in relation to the percentage of the city's municipal property tax requirement assigned to the residential assessment class. And you can see here in years twenty-three at the end of this slide, or this chart, years twenty-three and twenty-four, that property tax split has locked for this year. And that's unusual because in prior years, the only year that really had locked or increased slightly was due to COVID in twenty twenty. Tax comparison and the three major components to tax bills. The municipal component one, municipal tax impact, both residential and non-residential properties will increase by four point nine and six point three percent respectively. This forms seventy-seven percent of the overall tax impact for two thousand twenty-four. Component two in red, the education tax impact diverged between the non-res and residential classes. This is primarily due to the physical growth and inflation impact subsequent to two thousand twenty-two's equalization assessment role. Residential properties increased by three point two percent on average, while non-residential decreased by point four percent. This makes twenty-two percent of your tax bill. Component three. Finally, the homeland requisition increased by approximately two point three percent. Homeland is a part of our assessment base shared with Sturgeon County, Westlock, Redwater and Moreville. Due to the provincial equalization program, there will be differing impacts to the net res and non-res sectors in this requisition as well. And the big one that everybody asks before each year, the following two slides may be helpful for a typical residential and non-residential rate payer as they demonstrate the overall effect to a sample property in St. Albert. We initially begin with a property with an assessed value of five hundred thousand. Due to market inflation impacts, the assessment has moved from five hundred thousand to five hundred and eleven thousand, which is an increase of two point two percent. For this type of property, the municipal levy has increased by two hundred and six dollars or four point nine percent. The total education requisition increased by three point two percent. And the overall tax increase is two hundred and forty-five dollars or four point five percent. A caveat, this is a typical change. Properties with greater assessment than two point two will receive a higher proportion of the tax burden. And those with lower than two point two will receive less than average increase. So an exam, a good example is the multi-res that I talked about. The residential, the multi-residential market had an average increase of three point zero seven percent, so they would be receiving a higher amount of that tax burden. A non-residential example. Invision a warehouse in Campbell Industrial Park or a commercial building in St. Albert Trail. Their assessed value of one million dollars has increased by three point four percent or thirty-four thousand dollars. The miserable levy moves from twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-five to thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five, and that is a six point three percent increase. The education levy, the second component, as part of the provincial equalization process, the education levy decreased by fifteen dollars or point four percent. The homeland increase was one dollar, one percent, pretty inconsequential. Finally, the overall tax change is four point seven percent, slightly higher than the residential increase to remain locked at our ninety, seventy-nine point two, twenty point eight tax split. And finally, some notes on seniors' properties. Under the St. Albert Senior Property Homeowners Property Tax Assistance Grant Program, eligible seniors will receive a two hundred dollar flat fee. Only one grant is permitted per household. You do not need to apply to the city of the province to receive the grant. If you're eligible, your grant will be credited directly towards your tax account. And we received that information from the Alberta Seniors Benefit Program, and it is a low income-based formula, and a list of qualified seniors is provided to the city of St. Albert, so we don't administer that. Through the seniors' property tax deferral program, seniors' homeowners can defer all or part of their residential property taxes through a low-interest loan with the Alberta government. These loans are repaid when the home is sold sooner if the seniors choose, chooses. Um, the uptake was approximately seventy-three properties in two thousand twenty-three and we'll be getting the two thousand twenty-four numbers soon. That is the remainder of my presentation. I will keep the slideshow up for a few seconds, just in, if anybody has any particular questions about my slides.
Sorry, I'll open it up now. Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Um, okay, maybe a quick question for you, Stephen. So, um, when, when I thought we had two weeks ago, I thought the property tax increase was five point three percent, but now you're saying it's a four point five. So I'm just trying to figure out why there's good news.
We started at five point five. We had budget adjustments that moved it to five point three.
Yeah.
Um, essentially what's happened at that point is we've created, we've had to create that split. So we've actually taxed non-residential rates at six point three percent, which is much higher than the five point five that we said we would in the fall. So it is something where policy tells us that we have to keep that tax split locked. And so when we look at it, the five point, the five point three has now become four point nine, I think I'd have to go back to my slide here.
Thought it was four, five and four point seven for non-res.
Here, I'll go back here to the non-res or to the residential example. That's probably the best.
Yeah.
Four point nine, so I was correct. So the municipal levy for residential properties increased four point nine. But if you look at the next slide, the miserable increase to the non-residential properties is six point three. So it's really just redistributed between the res and non-res.
Okay, and then I'm guessing that the other difference to try to bring up the overall is because the education levy didn't go up by as much, so that kind of like factored in and in the total package that it.
So that's a very important point. The non-residential, the non-residential actually went down by point four percent for the education levy, which it makes up two per twenty-two percent of your total tax bill that you pay.
Right.
So in order for us to lock that this year through policy, we actually created a increase that would be higher for non-residential properties, but they don't see the overall increase from four point, well, four point five and four point seven.
So when you go back, you go back to the residential one?
Sure.
Yeah, so that's why, because it's like a three point something, and then the other one, the homeland housing didn't go up at all, so that, because the whole package, it brought down the average.
I rounded to the nearest dollar, so there might be a few cents in there.
It's, I'm not going to come after you and do the math, don't worry, but I'm just saying like, because it was four point nine and then the other ones came in, it just fa- makes the whole package go down by four point five, but our increase was four point nine now. And it was part because, if I just make sure I understand it correctly, because the, the non-res went up higher, so then the res went down to compensate, but the overall was a five point three.
Correct. The overall remains five point three to the aggregate of the total base.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions for Counsel Broadhead? You're good? I see no more questions. Um, sure, I was just gonna say, oh, go ahead, make the motion, make comments after.
Sure, that by law thirteen twenty, thirteen twenty-four being a bylaw to authorize the rates of property taxation for twenty twenty-four, be read a first time.
Thank you for any opening comments.
I do have one thing, and that is that I know that nobody wants to have a tax increase. But everybody in St. Albert needs to understand that we are all raising our taxes by the same amount this tonight. So this is not like we're feeling the pain just as much as everyone else is, in that we are also giving ourselves a tax increase. And it is what it is. We've tried the best we can for the past budget and we'll start on for the next one. That's it.
Anybody else have any comments? The only comment I would have is, we've spent a lot of hours on this, and so it's kind of almost a review for many members of council, but that summary in that presentation you made, Stephen, is, is, is good, and I feel like we should be capturing that in our YouTube and putting it in, embedding it somewhere on the website, because it really, good explanation of what's happening. Good visuals and stuff, and I always appreciate it, so. Nothing from else for me, Counsel Hughes. Okay, calling for the vote. Because the food's here now, we're gonna rush through these three readings. So voting's closed. That motion passes, Counsel Hughes, second time.
Yep, that by law thirteen slash twenty twenty-four be read a second time, nothing further.
Uh, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Uh, Counselor Mackay, go ahead.
That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of by law thirteen slash twenty twenty-four.
Awesome, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously, so we can go to third reading, final time.
Yeah, that by law thirteen slash twenty twenty-four be read a third and final time.
Awesome. Call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that passes unanimously. All right, let's take a bit of a break. It is five oh two, so twenty minutes, is that good enough? Or you guys want a full half hour? Twenty minutes is good. Counselor Broadhead, does that work for you? Is somebody delivering you food there?
Uh, it'll, it'll be fine, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
All right, all right, see you guys all in twenty minutes.
I'll never get any.
Uh, call for the vote.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, you're calling us too? Can you hear me, Madam Mayor? No.
Okay, all right, let's get started, um, because we are now on to twelve. Sorry, um, yeah, now we'll now we'll start, uh, thirteen point one, which is a councillor Killick motion. Um, notice of motion, so councillor Killick, why don't I get you to read it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, proposed motion is that council policy C dash C C dash sixteen meeting through electronic communications. Be amended to add a section stating that councillors shall make every effort to attend. Attend council meetings in person and only attend council meetings by electronic communications. Do to unforeseen extenuating or extraordinary circumstances.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open it up for questions. Councillor Brumansky, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, my question is for councillor Killick, um, what, uh, what brought this motion forward?
Uh, thank you councillor, so the the main driver of this was the situation that. Arrows at our, uh, SCOW meeting where a participant was joining by Zoom. And it created somewhat of an awkward, uh, scenario where, um, the speaker. Um, where the chair of the meeting could not override the the speaker that was getting into some communications that were of a. Uh, confidential or or potentially, um, in camera type situation. So when we we had that, it it just seemed to me that there would be an opportunity to say. Whenever possible councillors should attend, uh, in in chambers.
Okay, and my second question is, do you think that that doesn't exist right now, like? As it sits?
Well, I think the situation, um, that attending by electronic. Zoom type scenario, uh, again existed today, where we had a presentation that was taking a long time to load. Um, the it was said it was a Zoom type login type issue. Um, so I I think when we're, it just minimizes the opportunity for. Uh, glitches, um, like that. Uh, again, happened today, so to answer your question, yes, it's still happening, and the potential is that it's there to happen in the future.
But that really has nothing to do with the, uh, the effort, I'm just concerned if you think that the effort is not being made, because that's the main. Uh, you know, reason for the motion is it's saying that the effort isn't being made.
Well, I I think councillors are up, that it's up to their own selves, and there were some comments about. That this would be very difficult to police, um, or enforce, and and I don't. Ever had never contemplated that in my in my proposed motion here, uh, that this simply would be self. Uh, administered and self managed in a professional way, and. But I wanted to make it clear that the. First order of business should be to try and attend in person. Uh, certainly if people have extenuating circumstances, like councillor Broadhead is away on business. He's still attending, and that's totally fine, um, people have attended during vacations, totally fine, totally understand that. There may maybe medical reasons, et cetera, et cetera, um, those would be covered under the extenuating circumstances, but the first. Um, perspective that we as councillors and future future councillors should have. Is they would make every effort to attend in person.
Okay, and and, uh, the last question is, do you think that doesn't exist now, like? That people don't make every effort to attend in person. Like, I don't, I can't think of a a situation where it's not an extenuating circumstance that. I personally haven't attended, so I don't, I don't know where it's coming from, so if you have further information on that, then I'd like to know.
I I'm, I wouldn't, that this is not about any individual councillor, uh, this is about. Setting the tone for all of council to attend, make every effort to attend in person, so. Uh, this motion is not about any individual councillor at all, it it never was, um. It 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 was it was never in my mind that it would be viewed that way, this is to set the tone for. Uh, all of council, no matter who they are.
That's all my questions, thank.
Sure. Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, I will accept your motion, go ahead.
So it's quite simply as, thank you councillor Brumansky for asking the question of what was the key driver for it. Um, and again, not wanting to call out any particular, uh, participant, it could happen to anybody. Um, that but, uh, we did see a kind of a repeat of it here today in council chambers. Um, so I think that this. Uh, there's two other elements, main elements in this, uh, we all have our council schedule sent out at the beginning of the year. sent out at the beginning of the year, well in advance, that we can plan around that. If uh we want to plan holidays or whatever, you know, plan uh anything, we we uh we have the ability to look ahead and see when our council meetings are, a full year in advance, um and so I think we can work as a professional, we would schedule our own time accordingly to be attending in person as much as possible. The other um scenario that that came to to my mind at least, was that we have requested staff administration and Mr Fletcher has been very accommodating and helpful. Uh we've requested staff to be in chambers when they were presenting major items and uh that was requested so that it could improve communications and decision making. That's been very successful, again, thank you, Mr Fletcher, for and your entire team for that. We've we saw it again today on the tax uh scenario, very complex items that are much easier explained when somebody is in person. Uh you can ask them to go back to a slide easier, it's it's just makes a for a much better uh smoother meeting, so uh those were the key things that I thought it would be helpful to put into our into our policy, that again, self regulating, we're all professionals. Uh we can manage our time accordingly, especially with a big, you know, our calendar set uh one year in advance, so those are the key uh reasons to bring this forward.
All right, anyone else on debate? Councillor Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, uh when this moved to uh C dash CC sixteen, I thought it was a great motion actually, because basically what I think councillor Killick you're doing is is making a statement about what the intent of the council position is, and that is that council is in chambers if unless you can't be in chambers. Now, it's not lost on me the fact that I'm that I'm in Halifax actually making this particular argument. But but having said that, you've you've given latitude, certainly for circumstances where for whatever reason we may be taken away, and and to your point, what what is appropriate, I guess. Uh each councillor is going to have to make up in their own mind, but we make a commitment to uh to the citizens who elect us that we do the best that we can to bring our best to council every day, and and part of the expectation is that we be in chambers if at all possible, so thanks for the motion, um and I'll be supporting it.
Councillor Bramanski.
Uh we are in debate now, so um the, on this one, I will not support it, um the reason being is it's uh like it has been mentioned by councillor Broadhead is it's more of a statement, it's not a policy, it's not an enforceable policy, um um I don't, you know, and and with the mention that we're all we're all professionals, we all do our best, we all show up for council all the time, and to have this um to have this wording put forward as just a statement that um that that has no value, i- it won't be policed by anyone. Um I don't want to see councillors having to, you know, come to council sick if they feel like, oh, maybe am I not sick enough, am I, you know, uh that we're we're adults, we make the choice, and um I think that for the majority, most people are here most of the time, unless there is an extenuating circumstance and and uh being professionals and and being elected to the role, the role is important to all of us, and this is sort of uh with this motion, it's it's depleting our role in in my eyes, that that, you know, we have to be told to be here by policy, which um I don't, I don't feel that that's necessary um for council, because we all do our best on council, all of us, and ex uh you know, everybody has different circumstances in their life, I mean, some work more than others um outside of the role, um some some have better health than others, some have different reasons, but those reasons shouldn't have to be like exposed to other council members in judgment of of why you're doing what you're doing. So I I feel it's it's more of a a judgment statement policy than it is a purposeful policy. So um again, uh personally for myself um I I just feel like it's 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 an insulting policy to to myself, so that's why I I won't support it, so thank you.
Councillor Hughes.
Um, thank you, um I think insulting is actually the word I'm going to use at this moment too, because the the if this was initiated because I said something that another councillor thought was confidential, which wasn't confidential, uh and then there was talk override, and for that, we are now putting this policy forward, does not line up to me. I attend every chance I get, I was getting sick that day, I thought we're in a tight room, I don't want to have anything happen to anyone else. And that's why I wasn't there, it wasn't because of any other massive reason. So you can say you're not pointing fingers, but the fingers have been pointed pretty clearly, um regarding the electronic issue, we're doing Zoom and we are doing it for people in the public, and we're doing it for the public to watch on YouTube and any of those technicalities have nothing to do whether or not there's seven people in these seats or not. It has everything to do with the fact that we didn't upgrade our electronic system when we had the motion come forward or budget. But it it has nothing to do, it won't matter about how people are sitting in the seats, those those issues are going to simply manifest itself. Uh we look at the other municipalities, only one has restrictions about whether or not people can be in person or virtual. And the reality is that I don't want to make political statements in the middle of code of conduct, I don't want to have it, so it's interpretation, so people have to start justifying whether or not they went into virtual, um and then have a jury of their peers, because technically this goes into it, and you can say it's a political in some ways, but it also can be used as a weapon, where somebody says, I don't like it, this person was calling it virtual three times for some reason, we don't know what that reason was. And suddenly now they're putting quite a code of conduct and they have to go through the rest of that process, which uh luckily in this council, we haven't had to go through, but I have many of us have gone through it in the previous term, and it's not the most enjoyable experience to have to endure. So I just, I the the other thing is just that the whether you choose to attend in person or you choose to attend virtually, there's a cost, and when you do it virtually, it's a cost to the actual councillor as well, because it's more difficult to be able to connect everybody in this room, and we know that, which is one of the reasons everybody comes. So if a person chooses not to come, it's also to their own detriment. But the fact that they did show up, technically they've shown up, just like anyone else who comes to a public hearing virtually can also show up, and technically they've shown up. So this really is a decision for the electorate to make if they want to reelect somebody who attends virtually more often than not, um and how they want to be represented. But if we are going to put specifics in here like that, then it can be easily misunderstood, misinterpreted for other type of political reasons other than just actual attendance. Um and and then the the challenge I continue to have is that when I spoke to those developers, it was nothing in camera. It was concerned by another councillor member that it was in camera, and I understand that, but I did not say anything confidential. And so uh that that was not the issue on that, so I find it very difficult to say that we should be doing this, I feel that this motion in many ways is crest for the division in council as opposed to actually causing us to become united as we see only six people here today. So I won't be supporting it.
I'll just say, excuse me, um just to just councillor Hughes, I don't think anyone was blaming you, I think it just exposed a crack in how Zoom works, and you're right, there's nothing wrong, um but it could have been, and I think that was just in a crack that was exposed, um so I hope, I please, I I can't speak for councillor Killick, but I I don't think that was his intention, um I had approached councillor Killick about talking about maybe making this effective in the next council term, because I I actually um like people in person, it's much easier chair meeting when you're in person, um and I think it encourages people to be here, it's self policing, there'll be no code of conduct, because that's not related to the motion. Um the definition of extenuating extraordinary circumstances is vague, but it does set a tone, um and I can I can tell you that uh councillor members that aren't in chambers all the time are missing out on on important uh I wouldn't say conversations, because we don't talk about issues that we shouldn't be, you know, outside of the public realm, but we do bond, and we do talk about councillor Killick's dog who had surgery today, just those kind of things, and we get to know each other in a different light when you were actually here in person, so I I um I'm going to support the motion, I I agree with what many have said, that there's no meat on it, and there's no policing of it, but it does sort of set a tone, I think, for next term, um prior to COVID, we only had the option to phone in when we were out of town, and I I it was, it was we didn't have the same kind of technical issues that we do today, yeah, so I would never want to get rid of the Zoom option, because it does allow for public hearings, and it allows for you know, anyone to participate in our meetings, but I think council members, there's six chairs here, and when you get elected, I think that's where you're expected to be. Councillor Killick, close.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd I'd like to um apologize to any councillor that felt for whatever reason that they may have um that this may have been driven by their actions, I'm not even going to be very careful what I try and say here, because I I want my apology to be clear that there was absolutely no intention to call anyone out about anything. It was just used when a question was asked by another councillor to give an example, that was the example that prompted me to bring this forward, so um I respect all of my councillors, fellow councillors here that that sit at this table, bench, and I trust that they would act accordingly, and uh and that they do act accordingly. We try and be here whenever we can, unless there's unforeseen extenuating or extraordinary circumstances. So um again, I I want to make it very clear that this was not driven by any one individual's actions, it was a situation uh that brought it uh to the forefront, it was a situation, not a person. So I I hope that the rest of the council members um accept those comments and see it in the same light, thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with councillor Bramanski and Hughes opposed. Uh I need a motion to go in camera for the additional um conversation we're going to have around Bellrose High School traffic measures, I don't know what sections of FOIP, it might be the same as the Citadel conversation. There we go, go ahead councillor Hughes.
Wasn't there one thing we're doing before Citadel though, wasn't it?
Uh yeah, this is uh Bellrose roadway intersection discussions. It is uh in camera as the recommendation.
Okay, so camera, council moving camera, discuss the matter pursuant to sections twenty one, twenty four, one A, twenty five, one C, twenty seven, one A of FOIP.
And the reason, we're sorry, before we take the vote, um we moved this in front of the Citadel thing, is there could potentially be a motion arising, so I think the ledge is going to stick around, promise not to be too long, but I'll call for the vote now. And who do you need? Councillor Bramanski, we don't have your vote. Okay. And who? Killick. That's unanimous, all right, we'll see you guys in the council lounge, are you making me the host again? No, not till after.